See each and every one of you here. It's good to have you here. It's storming a little bit outside. The power went off here a while ago, but it's back on now. So it's good to see each and everyone here, and I appreciate your interest in your county government and all like that. So we'll get our meeting started today, and what we'll do is we'll have our invocation and our pledge to the flag. I'm gonna ask Supervisor Tim Tatum if he'll do our invocation and Supervisor Dan Quinn if he'll do the pledge to the flag, and I'll at least ask each and every one of you to please stand with us.
Good to see everyone here today. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thanking you and praising you for all you do for us, Father. We thank you for the opportunity that we have to conduct county business and serve the citizens of Franklin County. And, Lord, I just pray that everything that's said and done in this meeting today will be according to your precious will. And, Lord, I pray that we'll always look to you for wisdom and guidance in every decision that we make and everything that we do. In Jesus' name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, are there any concerns about the agenda? Is everybody happy with the agenda as it's presented? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we got that. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. All right, and there's no opposition. And there. All right, we've got some recognitions we want to do today, and I'll ask you to come forward when your name is called. Did I do that right? Monty, what's that? You got Kevin's, don't you?
Yes, sir.
What's that?
It's this.
All right, we just had, as you all know, as you all are aware and know, that here in the county, it's been some kind of a winter between the ice and the snow and the fires. And it has been something, it's been something else. And when the mountain over here caught a fire, and we had a place of refuge, and we had a place to go, which was Montevista Brethren Church. The pastor and some of the leaders in that church are supposed to be here today, and I'm gonna ask them if they will come forward. Gina Wright Hawkins is the pastor, Ms. Hawkins? Pastor Hawkins, are you here? Is there anybody else that came with you? Please, everybody that came with her, please come forward. Now, these folks, these folks opened, not only opened their doors, not only opened their doors, but you folks need to know, and they not only opened their doors, but they furnished food, they had water in there for them to drink, and they even prepared, I think it was some cots and places for them to take naps. And I mean, they really went above and beyond in their neighborhood and in their community. And for that, we want to show them our appreciation. Let me put this here. We want to show them our appreciation for what they did. You won't be talking to that, I know. All right, this is a resolution of appreciation to the Montevista Church of the Brethren, where as on January the 29th, 2025, a brush fire ignited in the wooded areas of Franklin County, Virginia, located near Wade's Gap Road and Webster Corner Road, herein called Wade's Gap Fire. Whereas, in the presence of the high winds and dry conditions, the fire quickly spread to multiple areas of Franklin County, necessitating the need for evacuation of surrounding residents. Whereas, the Montevista Church of the Brethren, herein after the church and its willing volunteers opened its doors to welcome the first responders and the ailing community and provided food and much-needed nourishment, shelter, and support during the Wade's Gap Fire. Whereas, the church and its volunteers demonstrated upstanding character, compassion, professional and care in their outstanding efforts to help the community and first responders during the Wade's Gap Fire. Whereas, a multitude of first responders and residents have voiced their appreciation for the service and care provided for by the church. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors declare that they are proud to have Montevista Church of the Brethren as part of the community and recognize the appreciation, the care, the dedication, hard work, and compassion bestowed upon the first responders and the community by Montevista Church of the Brethren and its volunteers during the Wade's Gap Fire. No, thank y'all. Something you wanna say? It's gonna be unusual for a preacher not to speak.
It would be, wouldn't it? I just want to thank the community, the first responders. Everyone worked with such grace and care and self-sacrifice, and we are just honored to be a part of helping those who are in need.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it again. Thank you. All right, here's one that I want to recognize, call to come up, and his staff, he took not only this man behind his way, but he had to have four people to help get him here. And the biggest reason is he wanted to argue with him all the way here on which way to turn and all. Carl, you come forward, buddy. You didn't think I was gonna let you by, did you? And all of his staff come, I think he's got a board member with him, and Billy, Billy, you're a board member, right? You're not a nurse, are you?
No.
Not even close. Whereas, the health and well-being of Franklin County residents is of utmost importance, and access to the high-quality, safe, and effective health care is essential to the vitality of our community. And whereas, the Corillian Franklin Memorial Hospital has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to patient safety excellence, to health care and outstanding service to the citizens of Franklin County. And whereas, the Corillian Franklin Memorial Hospital has been recognized as a recipient of the 2025 Patient Safety Excellence Award from Health Grades to Distinction that places this among the top hospitals in the nation for patient safety and quality care. And whereas, this prestigious recognition highlights the hospital's dedication to ensuring the highest standards of patient care, reducing avoidable patient safety events, and fostering a culture of continuous improvement in health care delivery. And whereas, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in acknowledging the contribution of Corillian Franklin Memorial Hospital and its dedication, health care, professional, for the continued service and commitment to the community. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its sincere appreciation and congratulations to Corillian Franklin Memorial Hospital for receiving the 2025 Patient Safety Excellence Award and commends the hospital, leadership, medical staff, and employees for their exceptional efforts in delivering outstanding health care to the residents of Franklin County. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is quite an honor receiving this from you. We could not be a safe hospital without our staff, without these young ladies here that keep me straight, and of course, without our Board of Trustees. And we certainly could not be a safe hospital without your support. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, buddy.
I hope everyone realizes what a gem we have with this hospital. We've got the best staff you could ever imagine, and the services that they're providing are expanding each day. So they, great job.
I got over here next to the nurses. You saw how I done it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We grab a picture real quick?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna get right here.
He's yucking it up.
Between two, uh, two rows.
He's still saying cheese. He needs to say ham.
Thank you. That's right. Thank you, Bill.
Do you want this? You want?
No, you do it.
Okay. You do it.
Okay, is anyone here to represent the Toast, the Franklin County Toastmasters Club? Ms. Lee Prom, okay. I knew you were here for a good reason. Oops. Lee, it's a pleasure to have you with us.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, this is a very special acknowledgement and award for us. This is a resolution of appreciation for a standard of 25 years of longevity. Whereas, the Franklin County Toastmasters Club, herein called Toastmasters, is celebrating 25 years of helping the men and women and youth of our community develop good, solid communication and leadership skills. And whereas, good communication skills are an integral part of any leadership role. And whereas, Toastmasters teaches community members to listen, respond effectively, and empowers individuals to become more confident communicators. And whereas, Toastmasters is dedicated to making a positive impact in communities and fosters self-confidence and personal growth. Whereas, it is the mission of the Franklin County Toastmasters Club to provide a mutually supportive and positive learning environment to which each member has the opportunity to develop oral communication and leadership skills. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors do hereby officially recognize the Franklin County Toastmasters Club for 25 years of excellence and for its valuable contributions to our society. Lee, I present this to you on behalf of the county. Would you, would you like to say anything?
I'd be honored to.
Okay.
Thank you all so much. As you know, public speaking and leadership skills are critical in any day and age, especially now. And so I just wanna let you know that our club meets every Thursday from 12 to noon, right in, right out, at the Franklin County Public Library downtown Rocky Mount. And it's just a tremendous organization. I'm very honored and blessed to have been able to be a co-founder of the club, along with Brian Duval, who was with the chamber at that time. And this is really near and dear to my heart because I've been a Toastmaster for 33 years, all across the country, from Washington State to International Falls, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and then in Virginia, and have belonged to eight clubs. And I'm so thankful we can have this club in our county. And I encourage you to come visit, have your employees, your neighbors, your family. It's for everyone. You might be retired, or I was a domestic engineer and got to come, and it was great. And now I'm a caregiver. Anyway, come join us. It's just a tremendous program, and you can go online at Toastmasters International and find out a lot more about it. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you all. You've done good work.
Mr. Tosh, will you come forward, please?
have the distinct privilege today to once again honor Kevin Tosh, the county's Director of Tourism and Communications, the Smith Mountain Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce, recently named Kevin the Outstanding Community Champion for the Regional Chamber of Commerce here in our community and our region. And let me just say, Kevin, you do a fantastic job, and you have done so since you've joined the county team, and we could not be more proud of you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to note, I had the privilege of being at that dinner and was sitting with the award winner. I didn't realize it at the time, but our staff makes us so proud every single day. And Kevin, your efforts and your hard work, it is so wonderful to see you celebrated by so many for your accomplishments and dedication to the county. Thank you.
All right, it's been a good day that when you can recognize members of the community like we have today, it's a lot of good stuff that goes on in this county, and we need to keep, keep that in forefront. And we appreciate the ones that have, that we, that we're there with. All right, our consent agenda, we've got to have some action on this, is how do you feel about the consent agenda? Anybody got any concerns or on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I need a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I will, Mr. Chair.
All right, need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Carter, Ryan Carter, you'll come forward with the monthly finance report.
I'm gonna have to come way down. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, so our monthly finance report for, as of March 31st, we'd be three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. We would expect to be around 75% give or take, depending on the timing of certain revenues and expenditures. So as we, as we look at our overall, we're at that benchmark where we'd wanna be, exceeding that in several areas of the revenues. What we are continuing to look at is our property taxes. So that's at 66.8% of budget. To give you an idea where we were this point in time last year, we were about 3% higher than that. So that's about $2 million below percent of budget than we were this time last year. So we're continuing to watch that revenues are just behind, they're close to budget or on track, but we are monitoring that, still not seeing the uptick in some of our property taxes. So on our expenditure side, we are seeing below that 75% benchmark, which is what we would wanna see. We're managing those expenditures appropriately, and no concerns from the overall picture. So graphically, just to show the revenues, we had a little bit of a down month for March compared to March last year, but you could see January and February up, so it's not of an overall concern. And so to break that out a little bit further in categories, you can see overall property taxes are up, a lot of that. I have a little more detail on some of that. So your main ones that are your real estate and personal property are the ones that drive some of that, but your other taxes, your machine rental tools, merchants' capital contribute to that. So overall, fairly good picture on property taxes. You can notice other local taxes is pretty much right in line with where it was this time last year. Revenue from the state is a little bit above, about $1.6 million above. Would anticipate that with increased spending. A lot of that is reimbursement-based from the state funding coffers. So real estate tax, we, we had a, still collecting very slowly on that. We are at a 5% increase year-over-year, almost $1.1 million. We would anticipate that increase based on the reassessment and the tax rate adopted. But as far as growth, what we're still looking at, we're still, if you notice, 49.23% of budget. We were at over 50% this time, the last two years. And so that's the, the main driver, that we're just seeing lag, we're not seeing the collections as we have in the past. So year-over-year, we were seeing growth, but percent of budget-wise, it's still, still falling behind. Personal property tax, we've had better collections in personal property taxes the past two months, and so that actually now is, is almost at 100% of budget. And when we have the April collections, we fully expect that we will have met budget on personal property with two months to go in the fiscal years. That's a good sign. We're seeing a little bit of growth there. 2.2% year-over-year, just under $400,000 on personal property. Local sales tax, we, we've seen consecutive months now of below trend growth for sales tax. You can kinda notice that on the light blue line, and so that's one where we, if you notice on the trend, we're 3.6% below for the fiscal year, and that's by $228,000. We're still ahead of percent of budget, and we would likely see an uptick as we move towards the summer months. It could very well be possible, as you look at some of these taxes, that, as we mentioned previously in the meeting, we did have a hard winter, and so I think some of that probably is impacting. You had people who were either struggling to heat their homes and pay their power bill, and maybe didn't spend as much out for groceries or other things or other sales, or they, with the weather, they just didn't get out. And so that very well could impact some of the slowdown we're seeing on sales. And remember, sales is collected by the state, then remitted to the county, so there is a two-month lag. So the March collections would have been January sales. Right? Okay? So for meals tax, we're seeing a little bit of a similar trend. We are below about 1% where we were this time last year, about $12,000. Still ahead of budget, we're at 77.6% above the 75, and we typically will, we'll see that increase, as you can see in the chart, as we get to the summer months where you get the warmer, and you also get the, the travel and the tourism and things that come to the lake as well. Occupancy is, is actually trending better. That's up 3.8%, $11,723 year-over-year, 76% just a little above trend and budget. And you'll see a similar trend with meals taxes, you would expect as the weather warms, that will also go up. So they're all trending very, very close. There's no, there's no great disparity between, but we're seeing some indicative trends of consistent months now falling below where we would see a year-over-year comparison. Expenditures, we had a little bit up for the month of March compared to last year. It was down in February. Typically, that's gonna be a timing, cyclical item. Expenditures by category, no real concerns. They're all fairly consistent with what we would expect, with slight increases for inflationary pressures that we would build into any budget. Health and welfare, you would see our category, social services, up a little bit, CSA up a little bit. We, we expect that. That's not atypical with what we're seeing with rate increases. Expect that to continue. There really hasn't been any change in fund balance or reserve since last month. The, the capital reserve is 850,000. I think that was a change. It was 1 million. That's the option on the Maju Craft property that was covered for that. And then budget stabilization at a million dollars. So overall, above our 20% policy minimum, we're at about $19.5 million in unassigned fund balance. So a little bit of an update on what's happened in the economy and the state budget. So for March, the CPI increased 2.4%. Core inflation was 2.8%, which include, excludes food and energy. There was actually a reduction in fuel costs that helped with the overall CPI. That was actually the lowest year-over-year indicator since March of 2021 as far as inflation and cost increases. So encouraging sign, that was positive. And so we hope certainly that continues to, to level out the inflation that we've seen over the last several years. Unemployment rate was 4.2%, relatively unchanged for March. Still a healthy unemployment when you look at the overall. Federal Reserve at their March meeting left the interest rates unchanged, and so it's still a four and a quarter, four and a half percent is their benchmark rate that we'd be looking at. Their next meeting is May 6th and 7th. Right now, the, the trend in the market or the, the thought is that they'll probably delay any kind of rate adjustments in that meeting as well, really trying to determine the impact of the trade negotiations and the tariff discussion and the overall economy, what that looks like for the inflation impact. So for pivot to the state budget, the General Assembly did adjourn on April 2nd to when they considered the governor's amendments. They did take action on certain of those. I think that the most significant for, for our local budget is that they did not accept the governor's amendment on the school support cap. So they sent that back to them with the full funding in there, which of course helps our local school system. Now, the governor has 30 days, which will be May 2nd, to either amend the budget through line item vetoes or to reject the, the budget in whole. Not sure of the likelihood of, of that. That would certainly go back to the drawing board and be a difficult situation to be in. But at this point, most of the items that may be vetoed doubt that, on, on a lot of them, that the General Assembly has veto-approved majority, so likely that'll be the mediation back and forth between the governor and the General Assembly. So hopefully, our, our hope is that the, the school funding will stay in there and make it through the entire process. That certainly helps our local budget and of course, our school system. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's the finance report. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Ryan on the financial report? Do you want it all? Okay, Ryan, you're going to, you got a couple slides I understand in regards to the tax rate and the budget.
We do, Mr. Chairman, just to help, help guide the conversation. And so, so we are, we had our public hearing last week on our tax rates and our proposed 2026 budget. And so with that, there were, of course, public comment period, and so we, what we did is we thought realistically for us to help guide the board, really the tax rates are gonna be the, the overall pressing matter that we need to decide, especially to real estate for the sake of bills and that June 5th due date. And so, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to, to put up kind of an overall review of where the tax rates were. So as advertised, the real estate tax rate was advertised at 45 cents per $100 evaluation. That is a two-cent, two-penny increase over the current rate of 43 cents. The other remaining rates for property taxes remain the same at $2.41 for personal property, $1.89 for heavy machinery, 70 cents for machinery and tools, and a dollar eight cents for merchants' capital. So for board discussion, for really, there's a couple possible motions on there. If there's any questions about either tax rates, or if we want a couple of things regarding the budget based on the board's convenience, be happy to help any way we can.
Or has anybody got any questions for Ryan? Anybody got any questions for Ryan in regards to the property tax rates as presented? I know we've done, we've done been through meetings after meetings and had work sessions, but here it is laid out in front of you. We can always come down, but we can't go up. All right, with that being said, and there's no questions, I'll entertain any kind of emotion that we may have. Anybody got any motions that they'd like to make? Everybody's quiet, huh? Well, it's unusual for the chair to say anything, to make a motion, but it's nothing that says that I can't. So nobody's going willing to make a motion? Then if not, I'll make a motion that we advertise for our real estate tax rate at 44 cent. Do I get a second? All right, no second, we still take a vote on that. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on it.
Supervisor Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Carter?
No.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Tatum?
No.
Supervisor Jamison?
No.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, that was
All right.
Five noes, two yeses.
Five noes and two yeses. All right. Do I get a motion on another one? All right, if I don't get another, another motion, then I'll make a motion that we do the tax rate at, it remains the same at 43 cent. Do I get a second?
Second.
Got a second on that. Madam Clerk, will you do a, a roll call on that?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
No.
And Chairman Thompson?
No. All right, that wins, that carries. That's the most unusual motion I've ever seen. I don't think that's ever happened since I've been on the board.
Mr. Chair-
But anyway, that, it worked, it worked. Everything was, covered static with it. That worked. We got something-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just want to make sure, clarify, on that motion, did that also include the other tax rates as presented to remain the same? Just for the record. 43 cent on the real estate, but all the others-
Yes, it did. Yeah, I made that motion. That means everything else stays the same.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So then, the other, the other item for matter is the meals tax. And so that was advertised at 6%. And so if there wants to be a motion to increase to 6%, I guess if we want to keep it at 4%, it could be tabled or denied. And we really don't have a, a motion to approve the current rate, I guess. So it's up to the board on action on this item.
All right, any, any conversation? Anybody got any discussion, any questions for Brian? All right, here, no discussions, no questions. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to leave the meals tax as it is and deny the increase.
All right, do I get a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Smith?
Um, no.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
No. All right. Let's take, let's take about a 10-minute break here, and then we'll come back with V-Dot.
And we do have discussion, further discussion, Mr. Chairman, now that the rates are adopted, the tax rates are adopted, on the discussion of the approval of the county budget. And so we, we have a couple of slides for the board as well.
We need to do that. I don't have that on my, we'll do that when we come back. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna have to adopt a budget that's, and since we don't have any kind of a tax increase, Brian's gonna have to tell us how we can do that, if we can do it. But before we do that, I'm gonna invite you back up to the board, if you've got any questions or comments. Anyone?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. I'll, I'll obviously evidenced by my vote for one cent tax increase. I want to just get on the record for my rationale, because I feel like anytime we're expending taxpayer money, we sure better be able to say why and what it's for. I believe that strongly. And my vote, having been on this board now for, I'm in my fifth year, there, it is intuitive to us as supervisors, we've got some significant challenges for the requests for new monies coming up next year. New money that we don't currently have budgeted. It's the school resource officers, the grant's gonna run out, so the county will carry the full load for the school resource officers, as well as the local composite index comes up due next year. And that's the number where the state decides if the county has enhanced inability to pay for public education. And you may recall, last year, they hit the school division, I think, for 3.8 million dollars. And so that money went away. We don't have any reason to think that the LCI is going to be significantly improved. My educated guess is telling me, we might be looking at maybe half of that for next year. But I think we ought to prepare in the 1.8 to $2 million range for new money that's gonna be required. The other thing is, we are on the precipice of some very, some very strong, fundamental needed economic development, you know, prospects and progress. And the county has not been in a place like this, I don't believe, ever. Can't say that for sure. My point being, because we've been a rural county, you know, for decades, there's infrastructure work that must be done to continue to attract business and industry to Franklin County. Those represent the need for new monies. So I look beyond just, you know, this one cent vote that I placed today, and I say to myself, the one cent Mr. Whitlow built in his proposed budget. And I supported that primarily for public safety, and primarily for work, starting to work on our infrastructure and build capital for these projects that we desperately need, our new 911 center, the CTE, and public safety offices. So we got a list some months ago about if we were to cut something, you know, what are the opportunities for that? There was maybe four things on that list, and they were non-consequential, quite frankly. So we have got to, I think, as a board, get to a point where we start to build some capacity to deal with these unfunded mandates on the locality, where year after year, especially with the inflationary pressures, we didn't adjust. We've not adjusted over the last four or five years for the inflationary impacts. We've just been taking it, we've been cutting, cutting, cutting. And we have a very conservative budget. We've not had to cut services yet. But I think next year, again, with these requests and demands, there really going to be demands for new monies on the tax base, we've got to be in a, in a position of being proactive and prepared. Because when we're not, there's going to be a risk of cutting services. That's not a place I want to live, quite frankly. And I am highly confident in the county administrator's proposed budget. It's doing the right things for the right reasons for the citizens of Franklin County. And so I just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to kind of predicate, you know, some of my thoughts about my vote on today's tax increase.
Anyone else? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Lori's final comment, doing, doing the right thing for the right reasons. And we did the right thing for the right reasons. People are struggling, food prices are through the roof, electric rates are through the roof. We're behind on tax collections from last year. I could not, in good conscience, hit people with another tax increase at this time. And it may be minimal to some people, but to a lot of people, it's the difference between, can I pay my rent? Can I buy my medicine? Can I pay my electric bill? We, the one cent increase, we offset with the insurance savings. The Advalorum Mountain Valley Pipeline taxes will be arriving this fall, probably be a million dollars, could be two, might be three. So we have that to fall back on. And I've heard the same sad story every year. I've been on this board, woe is us if we don't have these tax increases, we don't have, and we seem to get by. We have to run the county conservatively, like I did in a private business. We can't just keep taxing people to death in this county to make ends meet. And if cuts have to be made, they're gonna have to be made. That's just the way it is. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone, Mike?
I agree with Supervisor Carter. And I'd like to say hats off to staff for finding that million dollars, saving it on the insurance. People are struggling, it's hard to pay their bills. I haven't seen any cuts happen. We got the million dollars saved from the insurance. I suggest taking that other 750 from the bank and restoring it when we get the money from the pipeline tax. And that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else? All right. Oh, okay.
Last week at our public hearing, before I had to leave, I shared some ideas of some possible areas that we could cut if, if need be. And I'm not saying that we're at that point that we necessarily need to cut those areas. But if we see that, that that is a direction that we need to go, I think that we could look at those, you know, staff could look at those possibilities. For, for example, the one example that I put in there that was in relation to the sheriff's proposed budget, it was just a minor cut of 25, $50,000, but it was still higher than what he requested. It was $150,000 more than the sheriff actually requested in that, in that area. You know, so that was an area that could possibly see some savings if we need to go that route. I think, I, I agree with Mr. Mitchell. I think we can pull from our capital to take care and then restore it when the money comes available this fall. But if we, if we need to go through and trim, trim some areas, I think, you know, we, we could maybe find some areas where we could, you know, trim some if we need to go that route. I just did not feel, and the reason I didn't vote for it, I did not feel that it was fair to the citizens of Franklin County to raise taxes this year after the debacle we had last year with reassessment. You know, we cut rates back 18 cents last year, and we still had people that saw their taxes go up as much as 60%. And so I, I just could not do that again. So I have, I, I think with what you've proposed with this, with this scenario, I think that that's definitely a feasible way to go. Can we keep budgeting just enough to get by? No. Eventually, there's gonna have to be some big bites taken in the future. Hopefully, we can have some, you know, better economic news with the economy. We don't know. It, it's questionable, you know. But, you know, I, I, overall, I, I think it was a very solid budget, very good budget. But, you know, if we need to get into it and, and make some minor cuts, I think we could find some if necessary. But thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Thompson, Sheriff Thompson, had to step out, so I'll take over until he returns. Are there any other comments, questions, inquiries reflective upon the votes we've just taken? Okay, Mr. Carter?
Lori-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.-
I would just, I, I agree with you also that we've, we've made some, the school resource officers, the plans for CTE, all these things do have to be paid for. It, and the reason I voted the way I did, it worries me that if we go ahead and do that now, we'll be sitting in the same boat come next time. If the money's there, it's gonna be spent. It's just the way it is. And so I, that's why I leaned to vote the way I did.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. With this, this, every time this year, this is a very, very difficult environment for our board to go through. It's, it's stressful. It keeps us up at night. It's keeping me up every night. We're doing the very best we can. And I hope the citizens understand that. So Brian, I will turn it over to you, if I may, at this juncture.
Certainly. So, so we, we did game plan a couple of scenarios. This is a recommendation. This is certainly not something the board has to do. But the scenario we have on the screen is, did consider no tax increases. So really, we, we were able with the health insurance savings to budget, to balance operations. And so really, there's no impact there. We can, we can move on and let that, let that equate with the, with the full reduction of the taxes. It does impact capital. We're not able to fund the capital that was proposed. So we, we do feel like that it was important, because in that additional capital money that started to put money aside for fire apparatus, that started to better fund ambulance replacement, made sure we continued funding for radio replacement for our emergency 911 system, technology replacement that we all function off of. So that was kind of core capital replacement, maintenance, general maintenance facilities. So, and planning for infrastructure that we, we talked about. There's just putting a little bit of seed money aside. And so we are recommending that the board take 750,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund in order to balance capital. And then assuming as we get to the end of the fiscal year and look at year-end surplus, and we look at December, January, as we look at MVP money, and, and our just mid-year revenue look, if we need to restore any of those items, certainly would be a good time to do that. So if, if we, we do move that route, that really doesn't change the overall number in the budget. All it does is change the recommendation of, for our capital, where we pull that money from. So, First Chair Smith, and members of the board, if we go that route, the, the motion to adopt the budget with the reductions of no taxes and the assumption of using one-time budget stabilization for capital reduces the overall total gross budget for county and school system of 232,999,216. It would be a county five-year, this is the five-year plan. We, we adopt a five-year CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, of 69,119,945. What this doesn't include, and we probably need to include this, and I apologize, I don't have this on the screen, is also the school CIP includes the CTE facility. That needs to be adopted, especially for us as we move forward, if we move forward, for borrowing grant funds that may be available, needs to be in an adopted CIP plan for the board. That would be an additional 81,870,000. So if, if the total CIP is almost 151 million, so I have that number if the board is comfortable making any motions for the overall adoption of the 2026 budget, and also the five-year Capital Improvement Plan for the county and the school system. Be happy to go through any detail, we'll put it up on the screen. If you have a book with you, we could go to a page, whatever is the comfort level of the board.
All right, anybody got any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Brian, what is the balance in the Budget Stabilization Fund?
Right now, it's a million dollars.
What I can add to that is that this board, I believe, in my opinion, has been very diligent and responsible about the restoration of monies when we've had to pull them from some respective reserve funds over time. So I don't look at that as being detrimental. I certainly, I can support using that, because the capital budget is so extremely important to this board right now. We've got to make investments there. There's just no question about it. And the surplus year-end picture, we'll see how it goes. The way some of the revenue streams are looking, it'll be questionable in my mind, as, as to how quickly we can restore that. And with respect to the Advalorum, I don't believe, if I recall correctly, and you can correct me, Brian, I, I don't believe we know if we'll ever see that money. I think it's a big question. Is that correct?
I think we anticipate receiving some money. We just don't know how much.
Okay.
Yeah, we do feel like, I think that the estimate was $3 million from four years ago.
Okay.
The state nor MVP will give us a, a newer, more revised estimate. So it's just a, a big unknown. So what we did in the budget is we just anticipated we would swap revenue from what the commissioner of revenue was assessing to now the state is assessing. It will at least make up that difference. And so it was kind of a known net impact to the budget. And that's where we left it in what was proposed, Ms. Smith.
Well, and I, I, I need to commend Mr. Carter, Supervisor Carter, for being just targeted and focused on that Advalorum. Mr. Carter, you've been a good leader on this board for that. And I very much, I know this board appreciates your due diligence there. I'm not sure that we'd be having this conversation otherwise.
Anyone else? All right, I want to commend staff for what they've done here. And if we don't have anybody more comments, I need a motion. Y'all not gonna make me do this again?
I'll make your motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 25, 2026 county budget in the total amount of 232,999,216.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on this, please.
Sorry, who is the second?
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Could, could we also get, have a vote on the capital improvement? Could, could we also get, have a vote on the capital improvement plan, using the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in budget stabilization? So the total county capital improvement plan, how about we do this? How about we take the county and school combined plan? That number would be a hundred and fifty million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, for the five-year plan.
I need a motion on that.
And that doesn't dedicate funding, I want to be clear, that's just saying this is the plan, these are the future projects. The funding that the board approved was in the two-hundred-and-thirty-two, I want to be clear on the two votes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the capital improvement plan, given the total that was presented to us by Mr. Carter.
Do the second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alright, we'll go into our VDOT session. Brian Casala, going forward, sir. How are you today?
I'm doing well, sir, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. We'll start today with the VDOT road report, we'll give you the monthly update.
Thank you, that'd be good.
Okay. So looking at the maintenance activities completed in the previous thirty days, we have two projects I'll highlight, that's Route 122, we did some slope repair right at the Hales Ford Bridge. That was completed on a Sunday night to try to minimize impacts to traffic. And then we did a bridge replacement that was completed on Ferrystone Park Road. Looking ahead, we continue in the secondary routes with the brush removal and preparing for our twenty-five schedule work. And I'll call your attention, we're very active with our plant mix schedules right now that the district helps program for us, and many of our primaries are getting underway, but also the secondaries, they've been pretty, pretty spot on with getting those done. And that's the long list you'll see here following on page two, is more of these secondaries that are getting actually a plant mix surface this year. Nothing much to report on in the plan reviews. And then on the construction side of things, some of you business park, we've done a walk through as of last Friday to, to look at the, look at the roadway. And Mr. Sandy and I and many others were out there. So that's wrapping up. And then, of course, the project status, you've seen some activity most likely on two-twenty, we have some construction activities going on. So that really concludes our report for this month, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Casal?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, for maybe Brian and maybe Mr. Sandy. With regard to some of you, I just, I know that this report is reflecting the connector road. When are we going to start seeing any discussion on the signalization on two-twenty relative to the business park?
Don't have an answer for you on that yet, I know we've had some discussions about that. And I think some, some of the stuff, the materials have been on order, there's a long delay, I believe. And so it depends on, you know, when those signals are truly warranted, and we can have those discussions.
Okay, so it's not going to meet warrants as a, you know, with some of you being already there and businesses there, the traffic warrants, as an example, are going to have to be more reflective of the requirement for signalization?
I believe that was the last update, but Mr. Sandy, you remember, if we were actually going to put some flasher signals up? Yeah, Steve's been a little more involved on that side.
Yeah, I think so the, as, as Brian said, kind of the limiting factor now is the actual poles for the signals themselves. So VDOT has gone ahead and placed those orders for those poles, but we were told it could be nine months to a year before those poles would come in. And so there was some re-engineering work that was done for those poles, those poles have been put on order. So I'm anticipating later this year that the, there's a little bit of construction work in the road that would need to be done at the northern entrance, but the majority of the work is just going to be the signal installation. And so really, it's going to be contingent on when those poles come in to be able to get that work done. So I'm optimistic that it'll be, you know, late this year that, that we'll be able to see that work happen to, to go there. And then to just follow up on the connector road, that, that project is, I would say, very close to completion. There's a few minor items that, with any project, a few minor punch list items to be completed over the next thirty to sixty days, but then that, that project itself will be probably totally complete at that point.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else had any questions for Brian? Okay, now we're going to go into our six-year plan work session with VDOT. And Casal, you're here to present, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
It's your pleasure.
Looking for my backup here.
Y'all are brave. Very brave.
I don't know, don't shoot the messenger. Alright, so I'm going to give you a quick highlight and a summary of the plan, kind of where we were last year, and look at some of the roads that we did. We were in a fortunate position last year, we were able to add some roads, and that was a function of some of the roads that we constructed, they were coming off the plan, they had already been fully funded. And so I think in previous years, it had been a while since we were able to add any. And so the roads that we actually have in the plan today are Route 657 Red Valley, Route 635 Novella, Route 744 Webster Corner, Route 865 Timberline, Route 795 Staves Mill Road, Route 881 Narrows Road, and Route 755 Clark Road. So those are the ones that are currently in today's plan. We got our allocations and the projections for the out-years. So we had the twenty-five, we're last year, and now we're looking at fiscal year twenty-six. So this is the secondary six-year plan for twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one. And so looking at those, we've got a couple of things, so I'm going to start with just our summary here. Starting off with, the secondary six-year plan is updated annually based on funds allocated by the Commonwealth Transportation Board to counties for the purpose of performing construction work on secondary, just highlight secondary, roadway system. allocations are based on state revenue projections provided by the Department of Taxation, and they are just that, projections. Okay, tab three in your book.
Tab three in the book is where this is at.
The draft Franklin County fiscal year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one secondary six-year plan totals two-million-eighty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars allocated at the residency level, including seven rural additions, rural rustic projects, and three countywide cost centers. The countywide cost centers are utilized for various activities related to secondary construction, but they're not related or tied to any particular project. So based on the twenty-six through thirty-one projections and the projects in the current plan, we prepared two scenarios for consideration in consulting with Ms. Cooper and at the time, Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Yeah, so we're recommending, well, looking, consider one of these two options here. So looking at Route 657 Red Valley, and I know that's in Mr. Thompson's area, we actually have taken a hard look at what it would take to construct it. And currently in the plan, we've got a mile and a half. And so our estimate was previously six-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. From the most recent construction work that we're seeing, it, and when we get up to these amounts, we start having to put these things out for advertisement. So what we used to use as a maybe a fifty, sixty thousand dollar per tenth of a mile estimate, you're now looking at eighty-five to a hundred. So that's per tenth of a mile to construct an improved road. That one does have some challenges to it. So I wanted to justify the reason for the increase in the estimate from six-ninety-nine to one-million-five-hundred thousand. Now that's due, like I said, to complexity and the inflation of construction costs. Additionally, this project would need to be prepared for advertisement, as I just mentioned. And the other road project estimates were left the same in this scenario as proposed last year. And then the scenario, if we do this, it results in three of the four projects added last year to be removed from the plan. And those would be whichever the board's choice would be, but the last three that were added were Staves Mill, Narrows, and Clark. So we did a hard look at this and to say, okay, what can we suggest that may be an alternative to look at? So our scenario two is revising Route 657 to zero-point-six-five miles instead of the entire one-point-five miles. And that doesn't have to be in a segment that's contiguous to each other, we can probably do one end and do another end or something to that effect. But what that would allow us to do is to keep it at the current six-ninety-nine estimate and has less the impact on the remaining roads. So with the, with that, the revised estimates for the remaining projects to account for inflation, we did that as well because we don't want to be in the same boat maybe next year. So what, what I'm saying is we added inflation to the projects that are down further in the list to try to keep this from being something every year that comes up. And then, so that, that second scenario there results in four projects added last year to remain in the plan, and three of them would be fully funded. So with that, neither of these scenarios would allow us to add a road this year. So that's kind of where we are in a nutshell. Just wanted to present that to you all and certainly try to answer any questions.
I, I've got to tell you that this is, I'm very disappointed in this.
Yes, sir.
We, we backed off, I backed off at y'all's request, and, and for that firm ridge down there, and I backed off and done that, and I'd be John Brown if you're not coming in here, hoodooing the people again in the Boone District, and that's not right. You've done cutback on this, what's it going to be next time? You're going to do the same thing again when somebody tries to be nice and backs off and gives everybody a break, and then you turn around and keep screw the, screwing the people? That's wrong. They pay the same taxes as everybody. And when we backed off, I backed off at everybody's request, at VDOT's request, at Mr. Tatum's request, at other supervisors' requests, and then their road, and then the Boone District gets hoodooed all the time. This is wrong. This is absolutely wrong. It's not right. And I'm very disappointed in VDOT for this. This is very disappointing and perplexing. And I don't know what can be done, if anything, if I can do, but I'm not going to let it go. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to sit up here and threaten all this, all this bull, but this is, this is ridiculous. I understand, I understand the cuts in the budget. I mean, we just did it. We just did the cuts in the budget. But this thing of putting four new ones on the road ahead of the other ones that were on there, that's not, that's not right. That's totally not right for the folks in, in the Boone District on Red Valley Road. Because there's businesses on this road that's counting on this. And I've kept my mouth shut for many, many years. And yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm upset because it's perplexing the way this has been done. It's just another setback for the people in the community. It's okay to do it for everybody else, but to heck with, with the people on Red Valley Road and the people in the Boone District. And I'm tired of it. And that's, that's how I feel. This is just not right, Brian. It's not right, and it's not right for the county or, or you to recommend any kind of a change when, when it's like this. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm aggravated, I'm mad. And, and I'm going, I'm going to raise Cain about this. I'm going, I don't know what I can do, but I'm going, I'm going to figure out something. Because, and, and to turn around, to turn around and have the gall to say, you want to add four more on to it, you want to pull this one off and add four more new projects on to it? I, I don't understand that. I don't understand that at all. I'm through. Anybody else got something to say?
Can I make a clarification? The, we didn't add the four, the four roads that three of them may have to come back, come off.
What did you do?
Those four roads were added last year to the secondary six-year.
Yeah, but they still were added ahead of the, of Red Valley Road, because I was promised that Red Valley Road was next.
It is next on the list.
It is next on the list.
Then how can these other four be added on there and put on there ahead of Red Valley Road?
Well, they were added last year because we had extra money, and we, and VDOT and staff thought that there was enough money to fully fund it last year, but because of increases in prices, it's not. Now, there is two scenarios. If the board is, if the other board members feel that it's better for three to four, you know, roads to drop off so that you can do Red Valley, then that's what staff and VDOT staff will do. If you want to phase it kind of like the way you did Webster Corner, and Webster Corner still isn't.
Timberline's.
And Timberline, we phased those, you could do that for Red Valley and leave the roads on that was on the list last year. But it's, we just come with you as staff, both staffs, to give you a couple of scenarios of what you want to do. It's still ultimately the seven of you that make the decision. We just try to give you options of how to leave roads on because if those roads come off, more than likely you will put those roads back on when we have funding.
I think that's the bottom line, Mr. Chairman, funding.
Well, yes ma'am, it is, it is.
I, I share Mr. Thompson's frustration. You guys know this. I'll be at the CTB hearing again. The fact that, you know, little over quarter of a million dollars is, is what we're getting, which will probably barely pay a mile of, of roadway, I don't know what it costs. But to Mr. Thompson, Chairman Thompson's point, I don't understand how we can be setting priorities last year and then have those priorities shifted around unless you're trying to move projects for successful completion because they're cheaper. Now, so somebody's got to explain that to me, because I, Mr. Thompson has a very good point. I don't understand from, from what he's saying and what you guys are reporting about what is the, how is that decision made? How has that come about, basically?
So the, the primary thing is the estimate that we used back when Red Valley was originally put on the list, I can't answer too exactly how we came up with those numbers, but looking at it today with fresh eyes and getting some input from the grading and some of the work that will need to be done, we know that it's going to be significantly more. So, you know, certainly going from six-ninety-nine, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand to one-point-five million is a huge jump. And so that takes the money out of the plan, which you see, we were getting about a hundred and, well, about three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars a year total between our district grant unpaved roads and our telefee money. And I recall to your point, last year, we did a, a comparison of the telefee money, and we did see a decrease in that this year of about nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred dollars per year. So that's through the plan. So that has an impact on, on this as well, so.
But Brian, you know, I think a point from where we sit and the, and the hats we wear, you're talking about inflationary increases, and, and we all have those. I would expect that VDOT would be a little bit more proactive in their advocacy for your districts. The inflationary factors you're saying are, are now being countered into some of these scopes that you're doing, whereas prior to, there was no inflationary factors added into these numbers. Well, that's not our problem. So I don't understand why the state, why the CTB and you guys aren't working with Ray and, and Ken, and we're, we're not seeing any increases in our funding levels to get things done. So, and if you're going to blame it on inflation, it doesn't, I mean, the money needs to come to support the projects, and it's not happening. It's getting eaten up with what you all are using as a baseline of inflation. And we've got to have better numbers if that's the case. I don't even know how much of a contingency that you guys are building in when you scope these projects out. So, I mean, I, I really question how this is being done.
Well, just one thing is, when we're scoping these projects to put them on here, these are very high-level estimates. And I think, you know, yes, the inflation's been there, but we're also not down to the point where we're measuring things, widths and all that stuff. At that point in time, we're just trying to get some numbers to see what can we do with the money that's been allocated for this given year. And as you know, each year it may change, and we're seeing that. So I think, yes, we do want to do a better job about looking out at these projects, because some of these have taken years to come up and just for things like this that happen. So that's why we were looking at the second scenario. Mr. Thompson, I completely understand your, your position, and we don't have to do either one of these. We could do whatever you all would like to do. I can come back with some more discussion, be glad to have a meeting if we wanted to do that and drill down through it, just whichever would be the pleasure.
Well, how much is it going to go up next year, Brian?
I can't answer that.
See, that's what I'm talking about, keep procrastinating. See, that's what I'm talking about, keep procrastinating. Put it back, put it back and then we don't have it, it don't have it. And then how much money went up in Nolan, Virginia? You can't answer that either. I know you can't, you don't know. You know, and and that's, that's what's frustrating and perplexing. Because everywhere but rural Virginia. You know, I went, I went to Richmond, I told you this story before, I went to Richmond to a meeting a couple of years ago and they just want new traffic lights and new guardrails and all we wanted was a load of gravel on a dirt road and we couldn't get that. And 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 rural Virginia, southwest Virginia is getting dumped on all the time and it's not right. And I don't know who's advocating for us or if anyone is advocating for us. I don't want, I don't want Red Valley taking off. And, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it up for everybody else to see if anyone else here has any discussion.
Just, just to be clear, it wouldn't be taken off, it would be a reduction in the length, so just to let you know.
It's going to be done, but just a reduction.
It's going to be the same thing. It's not going to be done this year, not going to be done next year, probably ain't going to get done in the near future. Anyone else got any comments or anything they want to say?
Mr. Chairman, if i- i- if I may, I, um, hear the frustration and I know we had a very frustrating conversation, um, with the Virginia Association of Counties and back in Floyd, back in July, and of course, our chairman, Mr. Thompson, and our vice chair, Ms. Smith, um, trying to think if there are other board members that attended, I know the two of you attended that and, um, and it really isn't, you know, Mr. Cassell, I understand, you know, you're, you're, you're the messenger here as our resident engineer, administrator and so forth, and we've shared conversations with Ken King, our district administrator in Salem, and the frustrating, um, things about the lack of funding and the state, uh, secondary maintenance system. It has been a priority of this board, um, with our legislative agenda. Uh, we've had discussions certainly with, uh, our delegate Will Davis as well as, um, Senator Bill Stanley, who in fact introduced an amendment to the state budget this year based on feedback from our legislative agenda to double the amount of secondary maintenance money for projects like this from twenty five million to fifty million. Of course, that was shot down, um, shot down probably just a few weeks ago.
That was his board's idea.
Yes.
Was to increase the codified cap of twenty five million to fifty million.
And Ms. Smith, I think you helped champion some of that.
Yeah, and it failed.
And so I hear the frustration of the board and and, you know, Brian and and Robin and 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 staff, you know, whatever thoughts that y'all may have to assist the county and the staff and the board as to legislative advocacy, I don't, I don't know, you know, to Mr. Thompson's point about the numbers of the inflationary factors and and so forth. I know that's a mystery likely to you all, you got, you all get those estimates, I guess, from the Richmond Central Office.
As far as the projections or the allocations, correct, yes, there.
And and that's completely frustrating. Um, of course, I can't speak to Red Valley specifically, but I know that's been a priority, um, certainly of previous boards and that's the whole purpose of agonizing, if you will, going through this process of what roads can we add, which which roads can we get done with the very limited revenue that Richmond's sending us? And it it is, it's ridiculous, uh, in terms of how much revenue the state really allocates for what I'd call most of Virginia because the little bit portion of Virginia gets most of that revenue and and Northern Virginia and and it is completely frustrating. So I'm I'm rambling now, Mr. Chairman, and, um, with my comments, but.
If I may, just a couple.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, to the point, if it was reduced from the one point five to the point six five, Red Valley still is the next project in the plan and it would move forward, it would be fully funded at that point. Uh, I I just say that because that's where we would be focused. Um, and then I had another point I was going to make about the, uh, one of the things we try to do locally here is to complete these projects with our state forces or our hired equipment because we can do that with a little more control and it is not as costly. And so, uh, the last one we did was Bar Ridge and we did the majority of that with our Gladyo area headquarters. Um, you know, they went out and did all the work. We had a very good candidate. Uh, and Red Valley's case, eh, the dollar figure, I think it's seven hundred or seven hundred fifty thousand that we are capped at to be able to use that method of delivery. And then we have to go out to advertisement. So, uh, just a little bit more insight on what we were doing and what we were thinking as we came up with these scenarios, but understand your points.
Well, this paper here that you gave out, if Red Valley's on there and is brought, how come, uh, over the Snow Creek District, you've got number one over there and Red Valley Road over in the Boone District is number two? If it hadn't been took off the plan?
This is, um, this is from, because I didn't have a new map, so this is from last year's secondary six-year plan. So the plan that you adopted last year, Red Valley was number two on that plan. So on.
Where's this map at?
Where is this map at?
If you don't have a new map, where's this map at?
This map, I didn't.
You made a new.
Pardon me?
Why couldn't you have made a new one? You had this map.
Because, um, at the time, I didn't think until today when it was suggested to bring a map and there was no time for me to make a map. And this was one that was supplied last year to the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I will add just something. Um, coming through all of the conversations we've had at VACO with our regional partners, um, I have been given almost a directive to say, let's pull our eleven counties, you you'll recall, two years ago, uh, we contacted eleven counties, rural counties, and they wanted to participate in a consortium of, um, to really start drilling down on secondary road funding to begin with. Uh, I think smart scale is probably going to follow that, but, um, if it's the board's direction to me, um, my hope is to reconvene this group because I think we are seeing proof positive as we've come through this general assembly session, um, the noise has not been made loud enough and clear enough and, um, I've had it, quite frankly. I mean, I've just had it. Bedford and Franklin have not gotten a smart scale project in the last two years and the money's going straight to Northern Virginia. And we're just getting, we're just getting left in the dust. And so if the board would like for me to reconvene, um, this collective group of rural counties, I am happy to do that. I think it's needed personally.
All right. Anybody else got any comments or questions? Anything? Steve?
I I just add that we, earlier on your consent agenda, you did schedule a public hearing for next month to consider this, so I think it'd be helpful for staff to to really know, do, do we want to do a portion of Red Valley and keep all the other projects on the list or do we want to do all of Red Valley and probably remove the bottom three from the list? I think is kind of the two options that we've talked about. And so I understand, I think I understand the chairman's position, but want to make sure, uh, just as we come into the meeting next, uh, the public meeting in May, we can update the map accordingly as to what the proposal would be to, basically, I guess we'd go to a list of five projects, four or five projects, if we kept all of Red Valley on the list. Uh, and if we, if we cut Red Valley basically in half, we would keep all the existing roads on the list. Does that kind of make sense? I think the two options that were thrown out today.
Yes, it makes sense to me. All right. Anybody else got any questions or comments for staff? All right. I will entertain any kind of a motion that anybody wants to make. At this point, in matter of fairness, in in all fairness, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Ronnie, just, just one point of clarification. So this is your recommendation, Brian, right?
It's, it's, you know, we we tried to come up with what we can do to make the plan stay whole. So it is a scenario that that is the case. It's not something that we're going to say, this is what we think you should do. So that's really the the pleasure of the board. We're just here to give you data, to try to give you some information, try to look for some alternatives that maybe consider and maybe there's something else that you all would rather consider. So we're open to that as well.
Do you all have discretionary income that that you carry in Salem, in the Salem office? Do you all advocate, rather than come to a locality and dump this on a locality, would you all be talking to the, to the state office?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
To kind of overcome this?
Yeah, because after the winter that we've had, we've had some, you know, reductions in things of overrun and and the emergency operations, quite frankly, that we've had in the last couple of months. So that has an impact on our bottom line from a maintenance standpoint, but, you know, we do our best to tighten the belt, just like everybody else and, um, move on. So no, there's no discretionary money available for us. Occasionally, they may allocate some extra money for a certain effort, whether that be focused on ditching or whether it be focused on surface treating roads, but that money gets allocated in those ways.
Brian, I'm not killing the messenger.
Oh, I know, I know.
I I think you and I have a long enough established history.
Absolutely.
You know exactly what I'm going to say.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll have to say, I'm not trying to kill the messenger either, but I'm really aggravated. That's probably pretty obvious. I'll go back to the board is in, in, as an act of fairness. Is there any motion from the board? If.
Mr. Chairman, how long has Red Valley in your district been on hold?
It's been on there, it's been on hold for, uh, at least three years. At least three years and I would have to, probably longer than that, but I'm going to be, huh?
Yeah.
Longer than that.
It's been longer than that, but I'm, I'm being conservative.
And then we put it back.
It's been pulled off a couple of times for down there. Tim, eh, he did that sidewalk down there.
That was in twenty nineteen, so it's been five years.
That's been five years.
And it was on the plan prior to that, so.
It was on the plan prior to that. And I agreed to pull it for that sidewalk down there for Firm College. And that was to get across the bridge down there. And it's, it's been pulled constantly. And that, yeah, that's.
Well, for me, if this is the amount of money we have to work with, I would like to see Red Valley completed and and maybe some of the others shifted off.
I would say the same for me on number eight.
I'm, I'm the same way. We need, we need to go ahead and complete Red Valley.
I'm in agreement totally. Let's, we don't need to halfway do it, Ronnie.
So would the motion consider removing six, seven and eight for the full completion of Red Valley? Is that how you presented that, Steve?
Well, I think the direction we would need is, eh, did you want to complete Red Valley? And I think I'm hearing yes.
In its current state, yes.
Then I think VDOT has enough there to just, to see, okay, how many we'll have to drop off the bottom of the list.
I'll have to get back to you.
It'll be two, three or four. I don't know if we know the number right now.
We're working off of a spreadsheet here that I have. I'm waiting for our system to open up where we actually will be programming the secondary six-year plan. That should be within the next couple of weeks and then I'll know more finite about what other ones can remain or how they can get funded over the years.
So you can bring back a report in conjunction with the public hearing next month as another piece of, uh, information and data.
And one other thing I'll commit to doing is I'll have some of our location design folks and come down and we'll put a hard look at it to make sure that we're not off base on this inflated estimate and and I don't mean it to be inflated, it's just what we're seeing. So we can drill down on that and make sure that we're not being overly conservative because I do want to caution that if we do at the one point five million and do the entire roadway, it may delay it a year or so before the funding is completed, even pulling the rest of them. But I can get back to you on that.
Thank you and my thanks to the rest of the board for your, uh, your concern. Thank you. Anything else for, uh, Brian?
Brian, do we need to?
Any motion?
Do we need to back up the public hearing? I mean, is, at this point? I mean, we're going, you're going to hit us with some new information here.
Right. I'd be glad to have a separate, a follow-up work session if you would prefer. Um, we are in a little bit of a time crunch. I know we've got a May deadline that we need to get a resolution in place, so, um.
Yeah, because if we, if we hold the public hearing in June, you, that's going to.
It would be after the six-year plan is closed, but, uh. One table, Mr. Chairman.
I guess maybe we could bring, VDOT could bring you back the scenario of what roads would have to come off and I guess that evening you could decide if you were going to vote on it and I guess we'd have to, we usually, I only know one time that we've ever held it in June and I don't know what issues that.
It's been a whole lot of unusual things today.
Mr. Whitlow, do you have recommendations?
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe if you have the information back in the afternoon, maybe of the board's May twentieth meeting, just like we're doing now, maybe an update, um, work session, if you will, or maybe an abbreviated work session of that information.
So that you could think about.
Prior to the public hearing at six o'clock, if that works, if that would work for the board, you would have the information.
Yeah, in the meantime, we'll work steadfast to try to drill down on these things that we've committed to today and and try to get that information to you all so you can disseminate it to the board for consideration.
Well, and Mr. Whitlow, I think it would be helpful not to just put this stuff in our board packet. I think as soon as it becomes available, um, Mr. Chairman, if it's so clear with you, I'd like for us to go ahead and get correspondence and a report so that we can give it due consideration prior to a few days before the board meeting.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
We could do that.
That's what I was recommending.
Go ahead and approve.
So do we need to go ahead and, uh, what do we need to do?
We did it under consent.
For today?
Okay. You give me the direction that you want to stay with, completing Red Valley as the number one priority and then we'll see what we can do from a funding perspective and how the plan will develop from there.
How you going to plan that?
Yes, sir.
All right, does everybody understand that? We need a motion on that we want to leave Red, you tell it to leave Red Valley as priority and then you're going to come back with the plan on how you're going to, uh.
Correct.
Do that.
Do we need a motion today on that?
That's what you just said.
Or a consensus.
I think it's a consensus.
I think consensus is good enough for the day. I know five of you have spoke up that you wanted to leave Red Valley on. And I don't know what Mr., how Mr. Quinn feels or Mr. Jameson feels.
I think, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, let's go ahead and get it completed first.
I'm fine with that also.
And that's seven.
That's the con- consensus of the whole board.
That's the direction we need.
But that's good enough.
Yes, sir.
It's, yes.
All right, thank you, thank you, and then I want to say thank you to the board.
It's the right thing to do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Whitlow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a few updates, some recent events and upcoming events. I may have mentioned to you, um, back on March thirtieth through April fourth, the large-scale incident management team training was held at the Four H Center down at the lake. You probably saw a lot of media coverage. Uh, kudos to Kevin Tosh and Eric Schmidt of County Staff specifically. Got to work directly with the New York City's, uh, Fire Department. Um, and so if you saw a lot of, uh, FDNY trailers around the county and so forth, uh, what a great event. Uh, we were able to spend some time down there of incident management training. They could not be more impressed with Franklin County. Uh, may have shared that with you. Specifically, uh, uh, they complimented Napoli Cowboy Pizza. Uh, they said it was not New York-style pizza. It wasn't New York pizza, but they said it was good. And so, uh, uh, coming from New York firefighters, I thought it was pretty, pretty good.
That's a compliment.
It 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 was. And so, uh, they look maybe to have future incident management trainings here in the county. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think it was, yes, sir. Um, a few other things, uh, recently, uh, staff attended the Smith Mountain Lake Business Expo and appreciate, uh, Mr. Tosh and, uh, Ms. Poe, Ms. Foster and so forth for, um, manning that. I think it was a good event showcasing a lot of Franklin County businesses. A lot going, uh, on in the days and in the weeks ahead, um, in the county specifically, and we know it's tourism and spring season. Um, upcoming, uh, uh, as we've mentioned before, is the, uh, large major league fishing, um, event at Smith Mountain Lake. That's May seventeenth to twenty second. Uh, that will be, uh, national, international attention at our lake. It's the first time major league fishing, um, is going to be held at Smith Mountain Lake. So, uh, a lot of coverage there, um, and, uh, look forward to that activities not to be outdone. I may have mentioned this last month, um, following that same week when, uh, weekend, rather, uh, the Fishers of Men is holding their legacy tournament, not to be outdone, uh, there at Phil Pot Lake. So just another reminder of, um, how beautiful Franklin County is and, uh, how important tourism, uh, is to our economy here in the county. And so those are just a few updates. And so those are just a few updates. Appreciate, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all the due diligence, uh, be remiss without thanking the county staff, all the department directors, constitutional, specifically, Mr. Brian Carter, uh, and the finance staff and the budget team. They worked really, really hard, as this board did. I, I thank each of you. I know we worked very, very hard with you and our school system. Budgets are never perfect, they're always works in progress, Mr. Chairman. They can always be amended. Uh, they're flexible, they're supposed to be that way. And, um, and I think we, uh, uh, we will move forward with the budget that was adopted into next year. And that's, uh, all the items I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, at this point.
I think that the entire board will ditto what, uh, Mr. Whitlow said about staff. Because, and, and every year, staff goes above and beyond. It's not easy putting these budgets together. I mean, just for us to sit down and reading these budget books and trying to come up with our ideas, again, it's not easy. It's, it's very time-consuming, and I know that, uh, I know that, and, and I've, I've drove by here at night and seen lights on back here in the back, and I'm not the only one that has done that. And, and it is time-consuming. And we all appreciate staff and, and, and all your efforts. Thank you very much. Mr. Quinn, you got anything to add today?
Not, not that comes to mind, I guess I would just say that next week, starting Thursday in Charleston, the government attorneys will have their, and they'll have two annual conferences. Is that right? Two conferences a year. And this is probably have, uh, the update on all the legislation that was passed. Hopefully I'll be able to pass that along.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we'll go into other matters by supervisors. Anybody got anything to say? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wish the folks at home could see the crowd out here. The energy is electric in this room here today at the Board of Supervisors.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Must see TV, it's not, right?
You know, uh, everybody's very interested in the budget, and here we voted down a tax rate, and the, and the crowd is jubilant out here. I just wish the folks at home could see that, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, I would like to request that the board engage in a work session on the Act Fair. Um, I think that there are a host of issues that have got to be talked about, um, ranging from everything from, um, evaluating the last two years, things that didn't work, what we are aspiring for the fair to be, how we're gonna get there. We only have four months now, um, we've got a one-man show, which is unacceptable. I have some ideas of my own, but I would love for the board to be very intentional, um, about what our expectations are for the Act Fair, because it's important to this county.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I would like, uh, we had the building department and planning department here months ago.
Talk to the mic, please.
I would like to, um, maybe get an update as far as the progress they've, you know, uh, come, you know, they've made so far. You know, I know they was looking to get the computerized, uh, permitting online. That was one item, and other things too, they were working on too. Now, I don't know that, that's something Steve may can do, you know? I don't know that we need to bring them back in, whatever. I'd like to get an update on it, I think it'd be good.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh. I had a constituent call me, and then he emailed me. Uh, you know, a few months ago, it was added that, uh, VDOT, or not VDOT, but Legislature stated that some of the unmanned roads or the unpaid roads, you could cut the, uh, speed limit down. We could, the county could cut it down to twenty-five. And then a couple years ago, it's prob, it's been more than a couple years ago now, that in some, uh, and this was also Legislature for that, that we could actually, in a subdivision, certain subdivisions, we could s- state that they could have golf carts in them. Uh, I would like for staff to, uh, bring back some research on that. I'm not sure that, uh, because in my years in law enforcement, if there was a vehicle on a paved road or an unpaid road, it had to be a licensed vehicle, and I couldn't make comment to that. And I'd like for staff to do some research and to bring that to the board, uh, as to whether that's, uh, even doable or not. But it was, it was golf carts and four-wheelers on the road. I know, I know that that is being done. Shoot, I see them out there at my house, it's being done. I know some farmers that are doing it, but they're actually going from one side of the road to the other, and they've got the slow-moving vehicle sign on there, and they're feeding their cattle and doing things of that nature. And they're using it more as a tractor or thing like that. And I'm not even sure. I know that when Mr. Hapgood was the Commonwealth attorney, he was very lenient towards, uh, farm vehicles. But we need to find out, you know, uh, what's going on now, and I will ask staff if they'll research that and, uh, bring us back, uh, some information on that. Uh, anyone, you got something else, Marsha?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had a complaint from constituent, uh, same thing. He sent videos. And, uh, yeah, I think it'd be very good, but look into it.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you for that and for where we're at. So now, uh, Madam Clerk, you've got a statement to read, and we'll go into closed session.
You want me to do it, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, I thought you said Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I'll answer to anything. It's completely fine.
I got, uh.
It's okay.
I gotta apologize to the board, I got really aggravated a while ago.
That's okay.
Showed my butt.
It didn't show, right?
It didn't show.
It, it didn't show.
It didn't show.
Just don't watch the YouTube.
It, uh, I, I did get aggravated, and, uh, well, I'm gonna shut up, go ahead. Please.
I will do so.
Madam Vice Chairman, would you please read?
I will do so. The Franklin County Board of Supervisors.
Let me out.
Make a motion that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting in accordance with section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, et cetera, A-three, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property, A-five, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry, A-eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public, uh, body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, A-nineteen, discussion of plans to protect public safety and briefings by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or a related threat to public safety. A-twenty-nine, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Are we supposed to get?
Mr. Smith, you've got something to read, please?
I do, uh, Mr. Chair. I would move to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Check it.
All right, we got a, uh, a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. This evening, well, let me, let me back up before we go into that. We have any board appointments? I know we do. Uh, who's first, Tim?
I'd like to reappoint Leslie Holden to the Social Services Board.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, we got a second?
Second.
All right, uh, fl- uh, all in favor of Leslie going on to the board, uh, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
I'll wait till next month.
Huh?
Next month.
Next month, okay. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Is that everybody then? All right, this evening, we have four public hearings scheduled. There will be an opportunity during each public hearing for members of the public to speak on the prospective issue when prompted. The following are public hearings, we will have our regular public comment time. That's at the end, what, what that means is at the end, we will have our regular, uh, public comment time that you can talk on anything. Uh, first is the potential sale or lease of county property. And the property is identified as tax map parcel number, uh, one-one-two-zero-zero-zero-seven-five-zero-zero. That's the former Henry, uh, Elementary School property identified on tax map parcel number zero-two-eight-zero-zero-one-three-three-zero-zero, and Burnt Chimney School, uh, and Burnt Chimney School, perspectively. All right, uh. Ms. Robson, she's gonna present on this.
Yes, sir.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, mem, or Chairman, members of the board. Um, the Board of Supervisors recently accepted the conveyance, um, of two properties from the school board. Um, as Chairman Thompson mentioned, those would be the Burnt Chimney Elementary School and Henry Elementary School. Uh, while we have no specific, um, sale or leases right now being proposed for either property, uh, the county would like to begin marketing them, um, with the goal of getting them back on the tax rolls and put to more profitable uses. Um, in accordance with provisions of, um, the Code of Virginia, uh, prior to any sale or lease, a public hearing must be held, um, to hear public comments regarding the potential sale or lease of the properties. Um, at its meeting on March eighteenth, the board asked staff to advertise a public hearing to receive citizen comments on the potential sale or lease of the properties. Um, the advertisement for this public hearing has been attached, and it has been duly advertised. Along with the public hearing, staff, um, would request that we can move forward with funding buyers or leases for the properties. Um, so at this time, staff is respectfully requesting that a public hearing be held tonight, um, to hear public comment regarding the public, potential sale or lease of the aforementioned county-owned properties um, that were specified in the attached advertisement.
Anybody got any questions for, uh, Ms. Robson? Thank you, seeing none. I'll open it up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, you got anyone signed up?
I have no one signed up.
Is there anyone here wishes to speak, uh, in regards to the sale of the property of Henry Elementary School or Burnt Chimney Elementary School, either or both? Is there anyone here wishes to speak to that? If so, uh, come forward. Ma'am, I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is April Stoltz. My address is four-six-six-four Booker T. Washington Highway, Rocky Mount, Virginia.
Thank you.
Um, I think that it'd be a great thing to lease, um, Burnt Chimney. I would, um, education is changing. It has changed. Um, there is a lot of, um, more people homeschooling. I think it'd be great to even, um, have it as a place where it could be a co-op or leased for homeschool students, um, to go. The playground is there, there's many things there. Um, also curious to know if the trailer would be leased, um, separately, or if that's being sold, um.
I was gonna say, I can answer that question real quickly.
We don't answer questions here. Not in this. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? The board, the, uh, that's why we need your name and address for all this. Uh, staff will get in touch with you in regards to that. We don't, we don't answer questions here. Anyone else wants to talk to this matter about the sale of the property? All right, seeing none, we'll go back into, uh, closed session. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the board, what's your pleasure, you want to sell them or lease them?
Mr. Chairman, um, no action is needed, uh, this evening.
We don't need to do any action this afternoon?
Uh, that's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
We did that the other day, and.
No action's needed, it's just a requirement of the code that we have held the public hearing for the disposition of the properties.
You're gonna advertise?
And whatever that time may come, Mr. Chairman, whether it's sale or lease, the, the board will have that option. So we fulfilled the requirement of the code.
The county has been showing it already.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, with that being said, we'll go into, uh, quick considering ordinance to amend Chapter thirteen, offenses miscellaneous, Article two, outdoor occasional ordinance governing racetracks in Division one. Brandy, you gonna talk to that?
I'm, I'm not positive who was covering that item, or if that was, Steve, is that you?
Steve, you doing that one?
Yeah.
You are now, huh?
Yeah, I can, uh, I can speak to that. If, if you recall this, uh, we had an application for a racetrack, um, or a race permit, and, and one of the issues or items of concern was the operating hours on Sundays. And so, uh, what the board, the board did direct, uh, staff to advertise an amendment to the, to the county code that would, in essence, it wouldn't set a different time for Sunday races, but would give the board some discretion as to, uh, make modifications, uh, with, basically with evidence provided by the applicant of why they needed to, to start a race prior to ten o'clock. So, uh, that's what was advertised. There's, there's language in your packet under tab eleven. And I can just touch on that real quickly. So basically, uh, thirteen dash twenty-nine talks about prohibited acts. And that's where you were kind of stuck before with not being able to really provide any leniency or any, uh, any different time as far as a start race on Sunday. And so, um, the current code re- uh, reads that it shall be unlawful to operate between the hours of midnight and nine AM and before one PM on Sundays. So the, the proposed language, okay, great. The proposed language, uh, to, uh, subsection one there is to add the, the term, the words, unless the Board of Supervisors grants an exception based on evaluation of specific, specific event logistics. And then, uh, as you scroll down to the bottom, there's another kind of, um, caption there that says, "The Board of Supervisors shall be permitted to grant exceptions to the prohibited act identified in section thirteen dash twenty-nine-one pertaining to hours of operation with reasonable cause and circumstances outlined by the applicant, and after determining that such exception would not have a significant impact upon the safety, health, and welfare of the county and the inhabitants thereof." So, uh, that's the proposed amendment, uh, what you see here in red. And so, uh, we did have to advertise a public hearing to make those amendments. And so, before you tonight is the opportunity for public comment, um, on that. And then, following that, there are some suggested motions, uh, in your packet, uh, for approval or tabling, uh, if you think you need some additional information. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have relative to the proposed amendments.
Anyone got any questions for Mr. Sandy? It's very self-explanatory there in attachment eleven. All right, thank you, Steve. Madam Clerk, you got anybody signed up to, uh, speak to this?
No, I have no one signed up.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak to this, uh, amendment in regards to whether they want to keep the, the racetrack closed for a certain time on Sunday morning or to leave it, uh, or to change it? What is, anyone here? All right, with that being said, we'll close the public hearing, and we do need to take motion on this to the board. And if you look at attachment eleven, you'll see some recommendations at the very end of your book there. And I'll entertain any motions at this point.
Mr. Chairman? I make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter thirteen, Article two, outdoor occasion ordinance governing racetracks, Division one, Section thirteen twenty-nine, prohibitive acts as presented to the, to allow the Board of Supervisors the discretion to make an exemption to the prohibited hours of operation outlined in subsection one of the Reference Code section.
I'll second.
All right, I need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, the application for zoning map amendment, uh, Smith Mountain Lake Partners, SML Partners. Uh, Ms. Cooper's gonna present on this.
Thank you. Can you give me a second to get the PowerPoint up? Thank you, Chairman Thompson, member of the boards. We're here to do a zoning map amendment or rezoning on a parcel with about seventy-one acres. It's in the Boone District. And the future land use on this is low-density residential, and it has to do with the subdivision of the property and the conceptual plan that was approved previously. So to give you a little bit of background, the conceptual plan that I'm talking about is the Board of Supervisors in September of twenty-twenty-one approved a rezoning or a zoning map amendment for a hundred and ninety-five acres from A-one agricultural to RPD residential plan unit development. Um, the proposed use was for a subdivision called Brightwater. The proposed use was for a subdivision called Brightwater, consisting of an estimate of 112 lots. The applicant and owner is requesting to amend their master plan or concept plan entitled Mormon Road Development Residential Subdivision. It was dated May 19th of 2021. The request is to create a boundary line adjustment with existing Phase 2 Lot 73, which will consist of 14.46 acres and the road frontage and direct access will be on Washburn Court. The creation of four new lots that will consist of 15.01 acres and be assessed by 30-foot wide private access easement that will have existing and new pull-offs. Basically, lots that are created consisting of 15.01 acres or greater are exempt from our subdivision ordinance standards and regulations. This proposal also has a gravel road for emergency use only to Mormon Road, which is Route 635, is proposed in this new conceptual plan. The topography of the remaining acres is relatively steep and the road extension for the four of the five new lots would meet the regulations in the subdivision ordinance 19350 and 19352. Basically, um, four of the five lots would be accessed by this 30-foot wide private access easement, private road. Lot 73A would have access on a state, a private road that is built to state standards, but they would also have access on this 30-wide private access easement. These, the new subdivisions lots would be served by private well and sewer. Staff did receive eight phone calls before the Planning Commission meeting. We had two citizens speak at the Planning Commission meeting, public hearing that evening. They had concerns about the emergency access. They wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be used as a cut-through for the new created subdivision lots, that it would only be used for emergency access. There was concerns about whether a gate possibly could be erected to deter people from doing that and just have emergency access. I know recently that Mr. Holland and the citizen have spoken about this emergency access easement. And I think Mr. Holland will talk more to that when he does his presentation. We always like to give you a vicinity map of where this is located. We also like to give you the property itself. So basically, what we're talking about is this area right here. It's the third phase of Brightwater subdivision. It is zoned RPD and the future land use map is low-density residential. This is the new conceptual plan. So what you can see is this is Washburn Court. So you can see that Lot 73A has access to this road and that will allow it to be under 15 acres, but it also has access to the 30-foot private access easement. And then these four lots right here will be 15.1. And just to let you know that basically anything over that is not under our regulations for subdivisions. So basically, as a courtesy, we see them, but we have no regulations to regulate them. And they can be recorded in the courthouse. This is just showing the whole 71.605 acres. And this was the original concept plan that was approved back in 2021, just showing you how it was gonna be cut up into smaller lots and more, um, roads in it instead of like one 30-foot access easement. The developer found out because of the terrain, it was gonna be hard to have a 50-foot right-of-way and to construct these roads. So he worked with planning staff and his attorney to come up with the concept plan that you're seeing today. Just as analysis, I'll try to make this brief. The proposed change of the conceptual plan for the lodger lots in Section 3 of the subdivision would be inconsistent with the intent of the RPD district. As the proposed parcels are much larger, between 14 and 15 acres, of course, the comprehensive plan is going to support this as far as housing is concerned and the lot size and the dwelling types. We just like to remind you of the housing studies that have been done by the PCD and the critical need for housing types here in Franklin County. The one thing that it is not consistent with, with the comprehensive plan is low-density residential does have a policy that states all roads shall be built to state standards. And so this does go against what your comprehensive plan states, considered of the caliber of road construction. But we did want to keep in mind that if this was zoned, if they didn't have this conceptual plan in place, that because of our subdivision ordinance, the way it was rewritten, they could have this private road and it would not have to be constructed to state standards. Staff and the Planning Commission did conclude that the zoning map amendment, like I've said before, would not be substantial detriment to adjacent properties or the character of this, the surrounding area or reduce, or will not change by reducing the number of lots from the 38 to down to five. And that the zoning map would be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the county code. As I've stated before, it does meet the housing need of the low-density residential and the density that is required for low-density residential future land use. However, it does still not meet, meet the road requirement. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing last month and they voted 7-0 in favor of, um, the zoning map amendment with one proffer and the proffer is for it to be developed substantially in conformance with the conceptual plan that is in your book. After the Planning Commission public hearing, we, staff, and I know there's been some concerns about the roads, especially one of the steepness, Pearl Drive, that's in Section 2 of Brightwater subdivision. I just wanted to remind you, there is an option. We think we are close to getting as-built on these roads so that we can make sure that they were built to state standard and have someone to review them to confirm this. So there is opportunity of either to approve, table, or, um, table, delay, or deny. And I would be glad to answer any questions about the comprehensive plan for the, I mean, for the rezoning. And we'll do an SUP after we vote on this, for this same property.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, first of all, before I get to my notes, when you say as-built with respect to the road, what does that mean?
Basically, an engineer is gonna let us know how it was constructed. We have plans from ENS and Stormwater and we know what the, how it was, the road was supposed to be constructed and the slope of the roads. So the as-built is gonna tell us how they actually constructed it. So you can read these out as-built to make sure that it is constructed to VDOT secondary standards, dealing with slope, the materials that was used, et cetera.
So if that is the expectation, you're saying?
That is, that is what Phase 1 and Phase 2 has to be built because of the, when we get to the special use permit, because of the conditions that was placed on that, that they had to be built to state standards, plus our subdivision ordinance says they have to be built to state standards, even if they're gonna be private, which means they have to be 50-foot right-of-way, built to state standards. So what this 71 acres that we're talking about, because of the terrain, the developer does not think that he can build these roads to state standards. And he would still like to subdivide the property. It's just that it's gonna be larger lots so that hopefully the board would let him do a private road that's only 30 feet instead of 50 feet. And, and when we get to the special use permit, take off a lot of these VDOT conditions that are on the SUP for the private roads. Does that help you understand?
Well, Lisa, I'll be quite candid with you. I've spent a lot of time reviewing this case. I have documents from 2021 and so forth that I went back and studied. I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And for me, I'm not prepared to discuss all of this tonight because I'm not sure the answers are forthcoming in this environment. I've got a lot of questions about the roads, the access, the private access easement. I'm not sure that this board has had ample opportunity to really understand the difference between private access easements and private roads and the like. The frontage on these lots with respect to ingress and egress, that 30-foot easement. There are a lot of questions that I don't think that in this, in this environment this evening for me, Mr. Chairman, is gonna be sufficient for me to render a decision on this. But I'm not sure about my colleagues, but that's just where I am. If my colleagues want to move forward with this, I would have to reserve time to get into these issues this evening.
And that is fine. I will answer your questions now or they can be answered at, you know, a later time.
Thank you.
Anyone else got any comments or any things at this time? I've got a couple of questions, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you seen, received any kind of, uh, concept plans for anything that they've done to those roads in the building?
The only thing that I have in the office is what we require, you know, at first, we have a site plan, erosion settlement control, and stormwater. So when I look at the road segments of it, it shows that it's a 50-foot right-of-way, you know, to be built to VDOT standards. It also has the slopes of the roads. So each segment gives me a slope of what it's supposed to be, whether it's seven feet, I mean, 7% or 15% or whatever percentage it is. We do not have detailed comments from VDOT because they are private roads. They possibly could come into the state system at some point. That's why you all in 2021 put all these conditions on it to make sure that if the residents wanted the roads to come into the state system, it would be, there would be money to bring them in to the state system and we wouldn't have trouble with other roads that we've had in subdivisions.
Can you access these lots that we're talking about any other way other than the new road that they're building?
No, sir. There is a proposed emergency vehicle access so that emergency vehicles could get to this part of the subdivision quicker. But it's only for an emergency access of our public safety. It's not to be used by the residents of the subdivision.
Because I remember, I remember when this came before the board to begin with, my concern then was, like so many of these other subdivisions in the county, the, the developers build these subdivisions and then the roads are not brought up to state standards. And then the, uh, the buyers are stuck with a huge problem. I mean, you know, like Long Island Estates comes to my mind, Melody Lakes comes to my mind, and, and it's a huge problem. And so that's, you know, I'm trying to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. And then I knew that there were, there, they had been a problem and they were supposed to put up so much money for bond to make sure that these roads were bought up. Has that been done?
I do have a cash bond for over $300,000. And when the lots were sold, there was a price, I think, for Sections 1 and 2 or for all of them at one time was supposed to be $1,000 when you purchased the lot. So there is money being put in with, well, we have this cash escrow so that hopefully if we do take the roads into the state system, then we'll have money to be able to do that. And that stays for 20 years or whenever the roads, if the roads are taken into the state system before, if there's money left, it's given back to the...
Well, I mean, we were told this afternoon when VDOT was here, we was talking about Red Valley Road, little over a mile, and it was, well, a million and a half dollars. And you just said 300 thou, how long is this road?
Um, I don't know how long these roads are, but these roads are already, they're already supposed to be built to state standards. So they shouldn't be as hard as starting on a road like Red Valley that's gravel to bring it up. They should have the proper ditching on the sides, the steepness of it, the way it was put in should be, they should be better off than like a Red Valley or Log Cabin Estates or Melody Lakes that you mentioned.
Okay. And, or do you know if any of the lots have been sold in any of the subdivisions?
I can't speak. I don't think anything's been sold in Phase...
The developers here.
Three, um, his agent is, Mr. Holland.
Oh, okay.
And I, but I'm almost positive all the lots in Phase 1 and 2 have been sold, but he can... Oh, three have not been sold in Phase 1 and 2. But the new phase hasn't even been subdivided yet because they need this approval.
All right, thank you. That, uh, I don't know that I'm prepared to make a decision tonight unless Mr. Holland answers some questions for us. But has anyone else got any, uh, anything to, to add or to say? Thank you. Mr. Holland? It's your turn.
Thank you. Holland Purdue, representing SML Partners. A couple of things I'll address and then we can get to the questions. That may make it easier for you guys. As far as the as-built, um, those were agreed and bonded, so we feel comfortable with where they are on Section 1 and 2. Just so you know, $1,000 per lot was deposited into the Homeowners Association for that purpose. The new Section 3 proposed will be $1,250. But, no, I take that back. The original deposit will be 1,000. We're gonna go to 1,500. I told Lisa earlier it was 1,250. It is gonna be 1,500. Sorry. So $1,500 per year will go into the association for Section 3. Half of that money will be placed into a road fund. So you've got $750 a year per lot into a road fund. And speaking with Mr. Mormon who's here, and I know he signed up, there's been concern over this emergency access road. I think you guys have seen that. We do not oppose a gate. I know in speaking with Mr. Mormon, he's good with building that gate. Public safety has whatever lot key, however you guys want that to be done, my clients have no issue with that. That's not an access point for these, these lots. Again, this is about bringing, the problem with the terrain, if you've been there, is to bring it to, to state standards would be nearly impossible without spending a lot of money. It wouldn't be feasible for my clients. This is a way to try to make this work. I know that some people do not like private roads. We have a plan in place and it will remain bonded with the original bond, which Ms. Cooper can tell you, to the other two portions, the other two sections. We have a bond on the entire property. This will be part of that bonded property and with the, um, the roads. But we have a plan to maintain this, you know, as state standard as much as we can. The other two were built to state standards. They should be taken in once proper, you know, housing is built because you've got to get that for VDOT standards. I think that's all I've got on the, the backend. If you guys have questions, I'll do my best to answer it. Jay is not here tonight. He couldn't be here, but I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
Anybody on the board, any board members got any questions?
Ronnie, so I'm not sure if this is for you or for Lisa. I'm aware of those neighborhoods also where they have the roads and the road wasn't completed. And now the neighbors are stuck with a deteriorating road and, and it's a massive amount of money to bring it up to code or, or to make it really usable. And so I'm, I'm kind of echoing what you said, Ronnie. How do you avoid that situation? Because to me, $300,000 doesn't sound like very much money for, for dealing with the road issues.
Well, I, I think respectfully, you're blending two issues. The $300,000 that went into Section 1 and 2 is a little different. Those roads have been built, so that's there. Section 3 is gonna have a continuing, that road can be, will be built within the best possible, because you can't, I don't want to say state standards, because you can't build a state standard when you're doing a 30-foot road. Right? You gotta have 50-foot for the state to take it in. The goal here is to build the road to its completion, the best possible way is a private road, but then to continue to have money going in yearly, plus per lot, you'll pay that 1,000 upfront when you purchase the lot. And then you'll pay, you'll pay, the first year, you'll also pay... And then you'll pay, you'll pay, the first year you'll also pay the fifteen hundred dollars, which seven fifty will go into the road fund. So every year at seven lots, I don't, I don't wanna do the math on my toes. Uh, but that's gonna be about thirty five hundred plus a year in money going into a road fund uh, for those properties. And if Lisa wants to add to that, she's more than welcome.
I have a question. This, this road fund you're talking about now, Holland, that goes into the homeowners association. So they're holding that money and they're in charge of that money.
They, they are. So um, the, the homeowners association is set up. And there's a section one and section two. There will be a section three homeowners association, which I think we provided Lisa with the declaration. I think, uh, which says the fifteen hundred, but yeah, so the um, it's, it's the fourth amendment that we've done that will increase the dues to fifteen hundred dollars for section three only, not for section one and two, that's different. But fifty percent of the money that goes in will go to the road fund to be set aside.
But, but we're gonna have to trust that the HOA is gonna set that money aside and, and hold it and so forth.
I guess technically after the bond is up, you will have to trust that. The bond, I think, we're asking that it go to an eighteen year bond. Or, or we run with this for eighteen years. That's the, the end of the bond that's currently on the property. It is bonded. I mean, that's what's required and that's what my clients have done.
But is this section three covered by that bond?
It is covered by the bond.
I haven't done this for this year and I need to do it, but one of the conditions for the SUP that we're gonna talk to and we put it on.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. Um, one of the conditions that you put on in twenty twenty one concerning the private roads that are built to state standards, we're gonna put that in section three. I have not done this yet, but on an annual basis, what I do is I send a letter to the developer and he sends me a response back of how much money is in this account, so I can help to control it for the eighteen, twenty years, to make sure that people are putting money aside for the road, plus with the other bond that we have.
Lisa, I have a question. Mr. Carter, do you mind if I? Lisa, this is very confusing because I did not know in my five years on the board, that the county gets involved in POA, HOA issues. Covenants are governing documents for HOAs under the Virginia condominium association act. Now, if you're looking at the money for bond drawdown, that, you know, should that need to occur twenty years or under. I can understand the monitoring of the bond monies. But I've seen language throughout these reports that references the covenants. And somebody's gonna have to tell me if that's a purview of this county or not, because I don't believe it is. And, and, and Holland, you're an attorney, of course. And Jim's up here as well, but I don't know that we get, to me, that, because once the bond's there, obviously, and that's the connection to the county, right? And so we can't get into the business, I would think, of trying to manage, govern, or oversee an individual HOA or POA. My HOA went bankrupt, right? The, the developer went bankrupt, the bond disappeared. We've got a, you know, a halfway finished road. Um, there's nobody to go find, basically. Um, so how do we keep that from happening again? And the county has assured this, you know, my project as well as other subdivisions. I mean, we're not in the covenant business here. Is that correct?
Yes, we do not get into restricted covenants and I can give this to Mr. Gwynn so he can read it. Um, the condition number four for the special use permit that we're gonna be talking about says on an annual basis, within fifteen days, a receipt of a written request from Franklin County Planning Department. The association shall make available to the planning department designated representative that the associate maintenance fund records for the inspection to confirm that maintenance fund fees are being assessed and collected in substantial accordance with conditions two and three. Well, two and three have to do with the thousand dollars that Mr. Purdue discussed. And then condition two has to do with the roads being built to state standards. And I, well, I can read it to you, but it talks about the twenty years. So I can give this to Mr. Gwynn, so he can be looking at this, because I don't know.
I would appreciate that because it's as clear as mud.
Alright, alright, before we go any further, before we uh, we go any further, Mr. Gwynn has to be, if he's okay with answering a question in public, we will need to go into a closed session for uh, legal counseling to do with him. He works for the county, so are you, you, you okay with answering this in public, or you wanna go to the back first? You wanna look at it? Okay. While he's looking at that, I got a question for you, uh, Mr. Holland. Has any of these lots been sold?
The, the property's not been subdivided yet.
I'm sorry.
The property hasn't been subdivided yet. I mean, we're, we're waiting on this decision. I mean, we, we are very hopeful that these lots will sell very quickly like the other lots. Um, and I think they will based on talking with my clients. Uh, but again, it's, it's up to you guys. I mean, we're hopeful to have them all sold by the first part of May if this gets approved. If not, then we will
I understand.
Go back and revisit this.
Understand, okay.
So Mr. Purdue, is the, the subdivision of these lots, are they gonna have, I use road frontage very loosely. But is the plan for those to have their ingress and egress per lot based on this easement? This um, private access easement, is that the ingress and egress without respect to having a road per se? Because even, if you have a thirty foot road now and it's gotta be fifty for V dot, what's the point of saying you're gonna wait twenty years? Because if it's not meeting the width requirements today, what's gonna change?
Well, so Washmore Court is how you'll access these tracks.
Is what?
Washburn Court, you'll go there and then there'll be the thirty foot private, which is gonna be called Gibson Drive if it's approved. That's how you access it. As far as the twenty years, I mean, that's what the bond is. The bond originally was twenty years and now I think it's down to eighteen. Lisa, it might get close to seventeen. Um, but that bond will run with this property. Um, again, this is, is, there is no intent to bring this into state standards. I mean, it, it cannot be. If it's thirty foot, it can't be fifty foot. We cannot bring this in to state standards. It, it's just not possible. The difference is, we're asking uh, the board to change what you've already approved for this because realistically, the original plan is, is Lisa pulled up uh, before, which had a lot of lots. It just wasn't feasible with the design, once they got there and looked at the terrain a, and, and did a study on how much the road would be cost to be, cost to be built. Um, and so this was the more feasible way, after the seventy one acres didn't sell at their sale. Had it sold, uh, we wouldn't be here today. They would've had access. Um, and so this is a way to try to get at least seven more homes in Franklin County. Uh, they're bigger lots and obviously it'll require that private drive. But my clients think that based on what you're paying for the lots, number one, and what you're paying in the HOA dues, it covers the cost to build this road and then keep it, maintain it.
To build the road. Define build the road. That's where I'm getting hung up.
Define build the road?
When you say the money to build the road.
Well, the, my clients are, they are, they're committed to build the access easement. You can see that, I think, the, do they have the balls or? Do they have this? Okay. I, I don't, I don't know.
There's, do you want the?
Okay, you got that. So you have that.
Yeah, we've got that.
I'm looking at something from my clients. So the, the goal is, the, the foundation will be laid for this road. But the, you know, in order to pave everything, all the money that's gonna come in through there will be through dues, et cetera. Um, as you, as you all know, all the other lots, there were seventy three lots before. We have seventy that have sold. Those lots are, uh, the roads are all built to state standard now. We believe they are. We have no reason not to believe that. Um, that will continue in building this new road, which is gonna be Gibson Drive.
Would you agree that you cannot guarantee nor project that any uh, s- special assessments that would be levied or increased HOA, POA dues to continue to meet this financial load um, for the maintenance of that road? It, that's gonna be dependent upon the leadership of the HOA, correct?
Leadership to section three. I mean, I, you know, again, I, I can't speak for what I, I can't speak to that because sections one and two are built to state standard, we believe. If they're not, then obviously there may be something that V dot may come in and say needs to be done, which may require a special assistance. I, I'm not gonna guess at what V dot's gonna say as far as section one and two and what the cost of this is. Um, but again, as a, a group that has developed these properties before, I think they know what they're doing. Um, and so I think that, you know, when, when section one and two were done, I think we came in with the right plan. Section three would've been done towards the original plan, had that road cost not been so high, which then made it not feasible for them to do that.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Thompson kinda hit the nail on the head. Um, we've got nightmares across this county with private roads. Um, a lot of them in my district and it is a spoiler in a major way. Um, and, and they're left in the hands of the HOA or POA and whoever holds the majority share and the decisions that they make as to what they're gonna do with their money. We, we don't have any role in that.
A, a, and respectfully, uh, those were not bonded. I mean, I think that's part of some of the problem. Some of those are not, Melody Lake was not bonded. Um, I mean, I, I've, I've heard some of the names, but I, I, some of those were not bonded. This, the bond guarantees that my clients are trying to do the way, I mean, that when the county says you need to be bonded at this amount, that's, I mean, that's obviously trying to say, look, we're committed to this. An eighteen year commitment to this, I think, says if, you know, I guess if we get to year nineteen or twenty, maybe I won't be here. Uh, but yeah, you know, I think that's the goal of the bond and that's the goal of keeping them on the hook.
And I'm not challenging the integrity of Jay or yourself.
Yeah, and I know you're not, but I, I think that, I mean, that's the, I think there were times that some of these subdivisions weren't bonded and maybe that's why you have these issues. I, I can't speak to that. I don't know all of them. Some of them are older than, than any of us were here. Uh, but the goal for the bond was to make sure that the county had some skin in the game by the developer. And so my clients are willing to do anything that makes you guys comfortable with that, including dealing with this uh, emergency use road, because I know that was a big deal for Mr. Mormon.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. M.
I'm concerned about these lots. Uh, these, these folks going to the expense of spending the money uh, and putting this road in, that is to state maintenance. And then these other lots that are being built and these people are dumping back onto that road for egress and ingress and going back to there. And what's, what's gonna say that they gotta help with the maintenance on those roads? That's what bothers me.
What, what, you talking about?
I'm sorry.
You talking about Washburn, Pearl Drive and, and Mormon Road?
Okay, if I understand correctly, uh, lots seventy five, seventy six and seventy seven. It's fifteen, one in each one. This is a very steep hill here that goes up that cannot be bought to state specifications. I went over, that's the, that's, that is steep. And what, but you access these here lots. Now, I understand what you said a while ago about there's an existing turnaround that comes in here and it's talking about putting a gate up there on the Mormon property for egress and ingress for emergency vehicles. Am I right so far?
Well, uh, the gate.
That comes through, that comes through uh, lot seventy six.
Yeah, the gate would be somewhere, well, depending on Mr. Mormon, he can answer where he wants to build his gate. But it, it may be right here at the edge of lot seventy six. I can't speak to.
That's cool. But they're gonna come, they uh, seventy seven, seventy six and seventy five and uh, even seventy four, these people are gonna come back out to uh, uh, what is that road? Washburn Court?
Which will be V dot standard and taken.
Yeah, Washington Court, yeah. But who's gonna pay for that? And these, they, they, there's people on these four lots. And they gonna get to come back out onto that Washburn Court where these other people have paid for. Are they gonna go along with that?
It's, it's gonna be in their covenants. They're not really gonna have a choice. I mean, it, to be fair legally, I mean, it, the part of the covenants that they're entering is to maintain this road. And so they, you know, it's kind of one of those things, if you go to buy one of these, you know what you're paying for.
That's where you're talking about the thousand dollars and and all of that's coming.
And the fifteen hundred a year and half of that goes into the road fund. As far as Washburn Court, Pearl Drive, uh, Mormon Road and Springsteen Circle, those are all to be taken into state maintained roads through V dot as houses are built and as the state.
I, I know you've been down there. That road is steep.
I, I mean, and that's why we, that's why my clients cannot develop this to what they wanted to develop it to originally is because of the steepness of the road. So this made the most, this was the most feasible way to deal with the, these lots.
I understand.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Between lot seventy five and seventy six, this emergency road that's gonna connect up to Mormon Road, do they have some sort of agreement, I guess it's with Dwayne and Michelle Mormon, about crossing their property?
So, so Dwayne's here and, and Dwayne, I know he signed up to speak. He said he may not speak after we talked, but so that was something that Public Safety wanted. Um, there is, I think there's a gravel road down there already, so he's giving me the head shake. There is a gravel road there. Uh, again, I know that Dwayne's biggest issue was he didn't want this as an access point. My clients are good with that. Uh, Public Safety obviously wanted to make sure if we've got an emergency on seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, we got, or even seventy four, seventy three, we got an easier way to get in there and get somebody out of there. And so we understand that. Uh, and, and Dwayne's concern is that uh, we don't want people using that as an access point. We're fine with a gate. I assume Public Safety's fine with that. I, I, that's y'all's wheelhouse more than mine. Um, but we just wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with that road being there, especially the Mormons, uh, but also Public Safety. So that's not an access point. That's just something that Public Safety wanted and that was why it was, that was put in there.
Uh, also in the first public hearing we had, I understand one of the property owners was having some heartburn about signing off on the right of way. Has that been took care of?
Yeah, I mean, the, the right of way is purchased and Mr. Mormon's here, he can speak to that. That's done. All that's good.
All that's been taken care of.
All that's good.
Any more questions? Alright, Mr. uh, Mr. Gwynn, are you okay with answering uh, the question or we need to go into a closed session? Okay.
He says Lori, go ahead.
Well, the que- the question is, uh, what we were talking about, if you look there on the map, uh, lot seventy seven, seventy six, seventy five, seventy four coming down. And then it goes into, these here is that private road and there's a private road that comes back in there somewhere off of the uh, the existing or the checkered road that's coming in, the, the main road that's uh, uh, Washburn Circle. Is the bond, who's gonna enforce the bond? You know, here, the, you know, it was talking about the county saying that they enforce the bond. Who's gonna enforce that? I, if somebody, I mean, it's like, uh, like Lori's talking about her, her homeowners, it went belly up. And, and who's gonna enforce that? And, you know, is, is that, is that gonna be the county's obligation? Or is it gonna be the developer's obligation?
Well, it's only gonna be a pro- uh, an issue for the county if the bond is made out to the county. If the bond is made out to the homeowners association, we're done.
That's what I thought.
Right, which is frankly, I think what we contemplated when we did this originally. Because once I started reading this, I remember, like you said, back when we talked about this the first time. And we were trying to come up with a solution to roads that needed to be state maintained, roads that need to be capable of being state maintained. And the way that the original special use permit was written, we uh, we're hopeful, at least I'm hopeful, I think everybody's hopeful that the roads that are shown on the map that's on the screen uh, are gonna be accepted. They're built to the V dot standard, certainly we would request that. And once that's done, then the bond just, just appears because it's been satisfied.
But if I understand it correct, and uh, do you correct me? Uh, lots uh, thirty four, thirty five, thirty six and thirty seven, they're, they're, they're not gonna be on a uh, uh, accepted into the state system because of the topography of that road, right? It's a steep part. That's why there are fifteen acres or more.
Cool, uh, you said thirty, are you talking about seventy four, seventy five, seventy?
Yeah, did I say something wrong?
Yeah, I thought you said thirty, I, yeah.
Yeah, seventy four, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven.
No, that's why we're here tonight to make. That's not gonna get into state standards. That's correct.
So the difference, if I understand it, Holland, is that as a, as the condition for the special use permit, you get to that point. you get to that point, we're not gonna have, everything will be the same except these will not be with the state standard.
Right.
The thousand dollars, the bond will be held and all that.
Yeah, because the way we're doing this, it's kind of split in two. We're asking questions about the next hearing, I think now, but I mean, I understand why we are, but we're kind of getting into the second part of this versus the first, which is fine, I don't have to do it twice, but you're correct. Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
So we've essentially done it before. The only difference was, we did it before, the roads were gonna be up to the state standard, and this time we're not able to do that. The bond will be pretty much the same concept, the payments that'll be into it all will be the same concept that we approved previously, except for that point.
And would it be a correct assumption of this board that there's gonna be, there's no mechanism by which if these aren't and cannot be built to state standard, to VDOT road state standard?
I think everybody agrees with that.
Yeah.
It's not gonna go to state standard.
And so given that, though, is it an appropriate expectation that however these roads are chosen to be maintained by the HOA, or if the developer's still of the controlling interest, is their decision? So once we approve this, it's gonna be another private road that's not, I don't know to what degree it's gonna be finished or what have you, if it's gonna be, you know, something that would be amenable to people buying property there. But my point is just making a clear delineation between where our responsibility and staff's responsibility is, and then where it turns over to the HOA, POA, because my review again of these documents, there's been a mixture of language that has confused the issue.
Well, it certainly wasn't intentional. I apologize. I have something to do with writing this, but keep this in mind. We're talking about three sections. So that last section is essentially, one, two, three, four, five lots.
Correct.
If you're gonna buy one of those five lots, you're buying in maintaining a road through the five lots, that's gonna increase the price of the lot substantially with the contribution you're gonna have to make. I mean, you know coming up that you're gonna have to keep up the road, and there's only five of you to do it.
And there's only one homeowners' association to the whole project, so it's all together. And so disbanding, the concern of if there's not a separate homeowners' association here, and so in order to disband, the payment's different into it. Yeah, section three requires fifteen hundred instead of the twelve fifty, the, right, and some of that money goes into the road fund because it's different from the amount that's already gonna be in the road fund for section one and two because those were built. And so, I mean, in order to disband, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of lots. And some of those lots, as you all may know, that are, that have the very nice views of Smith Mountain Lake were very expensive. I mean, they were three hundred thousand plus per lot, and they sold out very quickly. And so, I mean, that's all taken into consideration here, and I think Mr. Quinn's correct. I mean, you know, these are not gonna be cheap lots, and you know what you're buying, and you're also gonna know which we provide to them beforehand, that this is gonna be a private road that's gotta be maintained. So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any more, I'm sorry, any more questions for Holland? All right, is there any more partners here for SML Partners LLC? Anybody here? All right, if there's no more partners here that wanna talk about it. Madam Clerk, you got anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here that would, in the public, I don't wanna close it, but I wanna open it up, that wishes to speak to this project?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from Mr. Mormon about this emergency access road, if you're okay with that, and you have an agreement with them and so forth.
Yeah, I'm Dwayne Mormon, and the last time we were here, there was questions regarding, I don't want people coming through my road, because I got a beautiful hay field there, and I take care of it, and I know how people are. They abuse things, and they'll run through it. So, but I didn't have a problem with the emergency access. I don't want people to, house to burn down or die, have a heart attack, so I discussed with Holland before the meeting, and he was agreeable to, I'll build the gate, twelve-foot gate probably would work for any emergency vehicles. I'll put a chain on it, and you all can, the public safety can put whatever lock they want on it. Because where I'm gonna put the gate, it'll be on my property, and everything past it, I don't need to be on it anyway. It's not mine, so I don't, I don't do anything on that. So, but we did agree, and just sitting back there listening, I might be out of line here, but you gotta remember, all these other roads are already state-built. They're good-looking roads. It's not, I own two lots down there. I bought two lots. I pay into that HOA, unfortunately, but I pay into it. This is, this is a cheap HOA. I own property down Emerald Island, North Carolina. I pay six hundred and ten dollars a month for an HOA down there. So a thousand bucks, if you spent three or four hundred thousand, if you don't have a thousand bucks, you shouldn't have bought a lot in the first place. But as far as the, the access, and they've done everything they said it was gonna do, because I dealt with them. The right-of-way, they had to come through us. So then, they built the properties, they've maintained it, they've taken good care of it, because I go down there every day. And I mean, it's, I grew up down there. But as far as the emergency access, as long as I can put a gate, and as long as it's for emergency access, like I told Holland, and they agreed, I'm good to go, and I'll build the gate, I'll put the gate up. Lisa said something about the maintenance of the road. The only maintenance that you, that's a farm road. It's old gravel, as far as the rock, it's been there for a hundred years, and the gate is actually gonna be pretty close to where he said it's gonna be. And there won't really be any maintenance. The only thing there is, there's overhanging oak trees, and I told Holland if it would help them out, if a limb or tree or something falls, I'll cut it up and move it. So, but I trust, they've done what they said it's gonna do. And I'd cry as loud as anybody if they hadn't, but, you know, but they, they seem to be pretty honest.
So the property, they've gone through some of your property for egress and ingress, and that's okay, what they've done?
Yes, sir. Actually, if you look at the...
Can staff, one of the staff give him a, he got a mouse there that he can...
Right here is the emergency access.
Oh, okay.
That's mine right here, and my wife's. And they bought right-of-way from here down. They bought that from us, and they, they actually, they've never, they never lied to us. They did exactly, I'm trying to think, because I like to complain as much as anybody, I can't complain that they haven't done what they said they were gonna do.
Okay.
So, I can't complain about what they've done. My only complaint is I didn't want any part of it. That's a beautiful field there. I take good care of that field. I didn't want them people using this and coming in and throwing the trash, doing things to my field, because I maintain it. And that was my only complaint, but once they said emergency access only, and I can put a gate, I'll take care of that. Nobody would come through there, except you all. You just tell me what you want. A twelve-foot gate should fix you up, but I'll put a chain on there. You put your lock that you want on it, I don't care. Because like I say, I don't need a key, because I'm not going back in there.
Mr. Mormon, is anybody from staff, I know the deputy fire marshal was in review of all of this, what about the circumference with regard to you building the gate for fire apparatus to turn around and so forth? Is that being taken into consideration with the gate?
Nobody's contacted me as far as, but twelve-foot gates should get anything that you can go down in there. And plus, once you, you go down there, you'll go through the road, and there's turnaround spots all back in there, back in the gravel road he's talking about.
Because I know the deputy fire marshal had put some numbers in the report in terms of what would have to meet fire safety standards, in terms of measurements.
I think Holland, I actually talked to the supervisor that built all this, the, he built the roads and everything, and the only thing I know about that is he told me, he stopped by the house, I live right there, and he stopped by the house and told me that the fire marshal, they had to do some pull-offs or, some kind of pull-offs or something there to make it work, and they needed access through mine, and I said, okay. I said, as long as it's emergency access, I would never want somebody's house or...
That's very generous of you.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to get hurt, but I don't want somebody tearing my stuff up either.
That's your house at the end of the road on the left going in?
No, mine's actually a big brick colonial on the left. If, as you're going in there, I got...
Near the end of the road?
Close. My actually grandfather's house is the last one on the road on the left, the white, big white farmhouse.
No, no, on the left going in. On the right, is it a white farmhouse on the right? That's the one. What's your granddaddy's name?
My granddaddy, Leslie, Leslie Mormon. Joel was Dad.
Where did Riley live?
Hmm?
Riley.
Riley was a, my dad's first cousin.
First cousin?
Yes, sir. Their property was actually what they bought this from.
That's on down in the bottom, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But my house is a brick colonial on the left for you, on that asphalt. And it used to be gravel, crossed over gravel. Granddaddy, Papa's house is on the left, before you hit the gravel.
Okay.
Yeah.
So yours is a fairly new house?
Yes, well, thirty years old. I built it. It's thirty years old, I built it, but I bought thirty-two and thirty-three, because that's where the old home place used to be, and I think it's the best lots out there, to be honest with you. And I pay in that HOA, and I want the place maintained.
Okay.
So, and I trust them to do what they say they wanna do.
Okay. Any more questions? Yes, sir?
I got one maybe at least, I don't know. The, as far as locking that gate up, does public safety have any problem with that? How's that gonna work? Has that been addressed? It don't look like it was in the department's report.
No, it has not been addressed. What I was thinking, sitting back there when we do, if this does go through, when we do the subdivision or before we do the subdivision for these lots, even though we don't regulate it, I would get with the fire marshal to see, you know, what he would want. Would he want a chain? Or what kind of lock he would want, because I know they want, they'll open the gate if they have time, but I think, you know, if something's on fire and they can't get it open, they're, they're just gonna, they're gonna run through the gate. But I can get with the fire marshal and see exactly what he wants. I don't think he would be opposed to the gate as long as it's, you know, wide enough for him to get all of his apparatuses through. But we have not finalized that. If that's something important that the board wants finalized, then that might be a reason to table. It's up to you all.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mormon, appreciate it. All right, no more questions for Lisa or that? All right, Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to find that the required information on the submitted petition is incomplete, therefore I move to delay action until all necessary materials and discussions are completed with the Board of Supervisors.
All right, we have a, let me turn this on. All right, we have a motion on the floor that we table it for thirty days, is that right?
That's fine.
Until at such point that the county and the fire department and everybody can get together. We gotta get this straightened out. The, you know, I've heard tonight, twelve-foot gate, and then I say in this report where it says twenty-foot from ditch to ditch. We gotta get all this here worked out, and all the particulars worked out before we can get into that. And I'm really concerned about these homes, these homes over here on these lots, lot seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-five, these five lots, four lots through here, five lots, coming back out on the state road. I'm really concerned about that, coming back out on the state road. Man, you know, if I paid the money to put that road in, I'd just like to hear what the developers has got to say about that. Anyway, that's, did we get a second on this? Madam Clerk, did we get a second? We had a motion, but we need a second.
A second.
All right, we got a, we got a motion, and we got a second to table it for thirty days until we get some questions worked out. Lisa, you got any more questions?
I do, for just clarification. I know about the gate, getting with the fire marshal, getting the emergency access road.
Yes, ma'am.
The question that you just said about coming back on the state-maintained road, but I know Mrs. Smith said you had other questions. Does this have to do with the special use permit? Or is it something that I'm, that you need to be answered?
Well, tab thirteen gets into the conditions.
Pardon me?
The next issue before us gets into the conditions.
Yes, so that's, okay.
This is the, this is the amendment to the...
The conceptual one.
To the concept plan.
Yes.
But it's hard to talk about one...
Without talking about the other.
Yeah, because these things...
I know you have other questions.
Yeah, because these things will inform potential conditions.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's, that's right.
Okay, I'm clear on it.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Tatum?
No.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Carter?
No.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
There were four noes and three yeses.
So it was four noes?
Four noes.
All right, so it'll go through?
Four noes to...
Huh?
The table. Four noes in a row. Right. So you're gonna have to have a motion?
So we're gonna have to have a motion for it to go through then, right?
With regard to the zoning map amendment.
With part of the zoning map amendments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I find that the zoning map amendment will not be a substantial detriment to the adjacent properties, that the character of the surrounding area will not be changed thereby, and that such zoning map amendment will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the county code, comprehensive plan, and with public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a zoning map amendment as recommended by the planning commission in accordance with the one proffer.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
No.
Supervisor Jamison?
No.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
No. All right.
So four yeses.
Four, three. Where we at? Okay, Lisa.
Okay, I'm gonna make this brief, because we've talked about the conceptual plan, so we've talked about everything. To me, the most important part is the vote of the planning commission. If you want me to go back through anything, I can. But the planning commission did hold their public hearing for a special use permit for the Brightwaters subdivision dealing with private roads, because that's what the SUP is for, is for private roads. They did, with a vote of seven to oh and eight conditions, make a recommendation to approve the special use permit. So what you'll see is the first one, the proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance to the conceptual plan, which is the Bridgewater, Smith Mountain Lake, section three that we've been talking about and looking at tonight. At the closing of the initial sale of each lot, the purchaser of the lot will pay to the association a thousand dollars to be deposited in the association-designated road maintenance reserve fund. We'll talk about that in a minute, about possibly changing that amount. On an annual basis, within fifteen days of the receipt of the written request by Franklin County Planning Department, the association shall make available to the planning departments... the association shall make available to the planning departments designated representative the association's maintenance fund records for inspection to confirm that the maintenance fees are being assessed and collected. For a period of twenty years after the completion of the private road for lots seventy-three A through seventy-seven, the developer shall be in, shall be a joint account holder of the association run mate, road maintenance fund together with the association. The developer will provide a note on the subdivision plat identifying the streets as private and referencing the road maintenance agreement for Brightwater at Smith Mountain Lake, section three. The exempt plat, the re- and road maintenance agreement prepared by Brightwater at Smith Mountain Lake, section three, shall be submitted to the county planning department for review prior to recordation in the Franklin County Clerk of Court, Clerk of Circuit Court's office. In addition, the road maintenance agreement shall reference the maintenance of the gravel road for emergency vehicle services. There was a question about, there is a condition that is recommended by the planning commission for some type of an agreement to be, to maintain this emergency access road. The developer shall provide documentation, calculations from a licensed engineer showing that the stormwater management regulations for the approved plan, Brightwater FKA Mormon Road Development dated January fourth, twenty twenty-three, are met with the proposed changes to section three of the subdivision. Basically, what this is, is, is when it was developed in twenty twenty-one, we have to make sure that the documentations and the calculations for the stormwater management regulations have not changed, that everything is fine. If it has changed, then new plans will have to be submitted. That's what that condition is. And once again, after considering what the planning commission did at their public hearing, there was some discussions about condition two, recommending a change from a thousand dollars to twelve fifty. But actually, if that change is something that this board would want to do, we would suggest that that be fifteen hundred from the discussions that we've had prior. And to recommend a change from the twenty years to be eighteen to match phase one and two of the road maintenance agreement. Also, um, recommend emerg- emergency access road to be restricted, possibly with a gate, like we've been talked and agreed by the property owner, which would be Mr. Norman and the Smith Mountain Lake partners to agree on a gate being put up, which we've been discussing. Also with this one, we still are talking about the as-built for the roads on phase one and two that I think are going to be available to us very soon to make sure that they're reviewed to conform with the compliance with the previous conditions, so that we know that those roads were built to state standards. Those are possible changes to the conditions. So I would be glad to answer any questions pertaining to the special use permit for the private roads. And I'm sure Mr. Purdue would be glad to try to answer any of the questions also.
Anybody got any questions for Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, might be from Mr. Quinn's direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Depending upon your opinion. Um, I'm still questioning Jim, um, I, conditions two and three in particular, um, are talking about.
Can you go back to your conditions, please?
Sure. Getting into, um, the HOA, the, the dues, the, um, the maintenance fund records. Is this something that the county should be conditioning or are these private matters to be dealt with legally through the HOA and, and the SEC? Cause they're dictated through the Virginia condominium act, and that demands a reserve study. These items typically, to my knowledge, are dealt with through the reserve study. And then it's the SEC's responsibility, if they take it on, to oversee compliance.
That doesn't, we, we can't, we don't change that.
Right.
So the, the SEC continues to do that, that's about it. All we're saying here is we just wanna add a level of confidence among those that are there that somebody's gonna, you know, we had the concern all along that the homeowners association is gonna not have the money. And all we're, all number three, what's meant to do was to make sure that somebody looks at it and says, no, this money's still there.
What about number two? Is that, is, should we be conditioning something like that?
Well, if we want, if we wanna have, if, if we wanna make sure that there's a fund there, then this was the way that we came up with doing it.
And, and not, I think the reason these were in there and the way they can be in there is because there's a bond in place. So you, so the ability for the bond is if we don't do what we're supposed to do, Lisa calls somebody, I don't know who she calls. But they can
The treasurer.
The treasurer. And they can start pulling from the bond. And so that's why that's in place. So I, it's not micromanaging the, the HOA, in my opinion. It's just saying that if you're gonna sell these lots, it's, this money's gotta come in or we can pull from that bond. I, I think Steve was originally involved, I'm gonna put him under the bus. I think he was part of this originally. Um, so I think that's what the intention was, and that's why we did it that way. That was a long time ago. Uh, but that's why I think you can do that, is because the bond's already in place to pull from if something's not done properly.
So I'm wondering if this is just trying to clean up some of the mistakes of the past?
Well, certainly, we had those in mind.
Yes. I mean, it, it is, it's trying to make sure, all the things that we're doing now, where when you do a subdivision, we make you give us a road maintenance agreement, and it's in our subdivision ordinance. And basically here, it's a, it's one of the largest subdivisions that we've done in several years. It's a way for us to try to make sure that there is monies there. To either maintain this private road that's gonna like to be thirty feet, that will never be taken into the state system. I don't think it could ever meet the regulations, to make sure that the people that buy these lots know you are gonna have to maintain, at least those four, somebody or the homeowners association is gonna have to maintain these roads.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good?
And Lisa's comment right there, for me, bottom line is, it's cavite emptor, buyer beware. So these people that are buying these lots, they need to do their due diligence and know what they're getting into.
I've just had personal experience in this and I know.
Oh, I know.
And I know how it works. Got a front row seat.
Oh, I know how it works too, but like I said, buyer beware. If you, you're spending three or four hundred thousand dollars for a lot, you better know what you're doing before you spend it.
Anyone else? Anyone else with any questions? All right, thank you. Alan, you got something else to say?
Just very briefly, Chairman, I, I do wanna say, um, I've lived with this project for a long time. I know Steve has. And I wanna say, um, just so you guys are aware, there are a lot of conditions that were put on this project. I think that were because of things that happened in the past. Um, my clients weren't always happy with Steve. I know Steve knows that. But I mean, I think the things that were put in place here were done to prevent these roads from being a problem. And so, I mean, to Steve and to, to Tina and to Lisa, I mean, they've looked out for this. I, I wanna say that because I do think it's important that everybody knows the behind the scenes have not always been happy times. And I think, you know, not trying to draw Steve into this, but it was a long time that we did, we went through this. Um, but I think they put everything in place to hopefully make sure this road gets built to the best possible way. And I think the Mormon, Mr. Mormon saying that, I think speaks to what my clients are trying to do. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, is there anyone here, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Mr. Mormon, you got anything else you wanna say?
I just, I don't think I'd like to know is, what do you want me to do about the chain and the lock?
Lisa'll talk, Lisa'll talk to you when it's over with.
I'll build everything else.
She'll talk to you when it's over with. All right, Board, what's your pleasure?
Will you all wanna make?
Go ahead, Tim.
All right. I find that the use will not be in substantial detriment to the adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and such, uh, use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the county code, with uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request, uh, amendments to the conditions of the special use permit for private roads as recommended by the planning commission with the seven conditions.
I need a second?
Before we second that, uh, on that number two, did you recommend fifteen hundred dollars instead of twelve fifty?
Yes.
And I'll make that part of my motion, that we make that, uh, amendment to fifteen hundred. You said fifteen hundred and still twelve fifty, right?
Yes, or the original thousand.
Condition two would be, uh, changed to fifteen hundred. And, and the other conditions as well, they go into the eighteen years, just sort of the twenty, and, uh, condition number six, recommend emergency access road to be restricted, uh, by the agreed property owner.
That will allow us to get the gate situation taken care of, that change in condition six.
And as far as the gate goes, he can put whatever lock he wants to on it. Every fire truck's got bolt cutters, and, and that's what they'll do.
Second.
Madam clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We didn't do this yet. Earlier this afternoon, we amended the, amended the county code to allow the board a discretion to grant an exception to the prohibited hours of operation. The proposed added language is contained under number twelve in your books on this deplay. Now, uh, if you look at, uh, was it section fifteen?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Section fifteen, we, uh, we've had, in our last board meeting, we had an application submitted that we couldn't act upon until we did this. So, uh, is there anybody here, well, we've already had the public hearing on this. We've already had the public hearing on this. So we don't need to do a public hearing, we've already done that. Is there anybody here got any questions or comment before we take, I take, uh, make a call for the vote? Or does anybody wanna make a, uh, a vote, uh?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I may, uh, make a motion to authorize the county administrators to approve the twenty twenty-five outdoor occasion racetrack permit application submitted by Mr. Mears Edmondson. Uh, further find that a ten o'clock AM start time on Sunday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, um, for the race, is, uh, uh, that issue will not have any significant impact upon the safety, health, and welfare of the county and its inhabitants. And thereby, under the newly amended code, section thirteen twenty-nine, uh, prohibits acts, grants an exception to the prohibited hours of operation outlined therein to allow start time of ten AM on Sunday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Need a second?
A second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Madam clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right, before we go into public hearing, we're not here for a few minutes, we're gonna take off some time. Okay, thank you for your patience tonight with all of our public hearings. We now, we have now reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question and answer session, and board members will not answer questions. And during public comment, if a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam clerk, have anybody signed up for tonight?
Yes, I have Neil Howes, and he's speaking on behalf of a council, so he asked for five minutes.
All right, well, actually come forward and to, uh, state your name and address, and what was the?
Smith Mountain Arts Council.
So we got anybody else here for the Smith Mountain Arts Council? All right, this will be the only speaker then that can speak to this. I'll give you five minutes, yes, sir?
Thank you, sir. My name's Neil Howes. I live at sixty thirty Hardy Road, Hardy, Virginia. I represent the Smith Mountain Arts Council. This organization's been, been valed since nineteen ninety. And we're gonna have an art expo on May the tenth at Trinity Mount Parish Church. We're gonna have from ten to four, we're gonna have about twenty affiliates. We're gonna have the kids with their, um, music, art shows, photo shows. We're gonna have, um, face painting, we're gonna have balloons, we're gonna have stilts, we're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have fire trucks. The whole idea is that we are trying to exhibit what we have going on in this area. Smith Mountain Lake is growing, you all know that. You just saw that development right there. We have demands that we can't even keep up with. We're trying to help kids. Prime example, we're at the business expo, father came up with the son, I need to give him guitar lessons. It's constant, 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 constant. We're in the process of basically of raising ten thousand dollars. However, we have expenses. So what I'm asking for is basically thirty-five hundred, and I just put us a line not, a line item for years to come for this thirty-five hundred. And let me explain to you why it's important. Here's an example. This little boy, normal, five years old. Next thing you know, he had the mumps. Next thing you know, he couldn't speak very well. All the numbers were jumbled up. Next you know, he's being teased, the whole nine yards. And then he got a chance to play Winnie the Pooh. He went with his mother, studied his lines for three weeks. He performed excellent. And then all of a sudden, he took singing lessons, learned how to speak. Then he took tap lessons, learned how to basically balance himself. He learned all those things that basically took himself later on in his life. I'm that boy. I retired at fifty-seven, so I could go back in the acting and have fun. There's kids out there just like me, boys and girls, and they need help. And this is what we're trying to do. The whole idea is this, strong arts, strong community, come grow with us. If we have a strong arts program, we can bring development. And that's what's important. And I just appreciate your time and thank you very much. I'm gonna give you this.
Give it to the clerk, she'll pass it out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyway, appreciate, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Madam clerk?
Don Vineyard, he's also speaking for, um, the Democratic Party and the, uh, Smith Mountain Lake in double ACP. So he's asked for five minutes also.
I would like to request the five minutes, if I may, since I'm representing several people, several groups.
Anybody else here? What's the name of your organization?
We have several I represent.
What's the name of your organization, sir?
The organization is the Smith Mountain Lake Democrats, Indivisible Smith Mountain Lake, the Franklin County N double A C P, Franklin County Indivisible, the Franklin County Democratic Committee, and other unaffiliated, uh, uh, individuals of Franklin County.
Are there any, anybody else here with other organizations that plan on speaking?
We have several back there, but none of them ask to speak.
Are you, if, if you're gonna speak, is there anybody else here in that organization back there that wants, you can have three minutes, sir? You've got more than, you've got some other speakers back there.
I do?
Yes, sir. The lady on the front in the middle wants to speak.
Oh, she's not speaking on my issue.
What are you speaking on, ma'am?
I'm supporting that issue, but I'm, I'm speaking independently of, of the group.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you. I'll stick to the three minutes. Don Vineyard, seven Don Vineyard, seventeen fifty-five, Five Mile Mountain Road, Callaway, representing the Smith Mountain Lake Democrats, Indivisible Smith Mountain Lake, you heard all that. We're deeply concerned that the proposed cuts to Medicaid funding will have a devastating impact on our community and will adversely affect our local economy. Since you're the folks who will have to decide how to react to this impending crisis, we're presenting a resolution for your consideration, which we believe will result in this board obtaining some critical data to help you know how best to react when the effects are felt. Please give this resolution careful consideration and adopt it quickly as the legislation is moving through Congress this month. And you have copies, I've given to your clerk for each of those. The proposed resolution reads as thus, resolution of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors requesting a comprehensive study by the Weldon Cooper Center and Virginia Tech Center for Economic and Community Engagement to assess the impact of Medicaid cuts on Franklin County. Whereas Congressman Morgan Griffith and others recently voted in favor of federal budget legislation that includes eight hundred eighty billion dollars in Medicaid cuts, with an estimated two point four billion dollars of those cuts impacting southwest Virginia. And whereas Medicaid is a vital source of healthcare funding for the citizens of Franklin County and plays a significant role in supporting local hospitals, independent pharmacies, nursing homes, home healthcare providers, and other healthcare services that serve our most vulnerable populations, including children, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. And whereas healthcare providers are among the largest employers in Franklin County and any significant reduction in Medicaid funding will undoubtedly result in job losses within the healthcare sector, threatening the economic stability of the region. And whereas the healthcare providers among the largest employer, um, oh, excuse me, whereas healthcare careers such as doctors, registered nurses, certified nursing assistants, pharmacists, and other medical professions are vital pathways to Franklin County students seeking stable, well-paying careers. And whereas without reliable healthcare industry job opportunities in Franklin County, future professionals may be forced to relocate outside the county and region to secure employment. And whereas Franklin County's financial stability is closely tied to the health of our local economy and reductions in Medicaid funding could have a severe fiscal impact on the county budget, Franklin County school budget, and other essential services. And whereas the Weldon Cooper Center for the Public Service and Virginia Tech Center for Economic Community Engagement have a proven track record of providing accurate, nonpartisan economic analysis and are well-equipped to assess the short-term and long-term effects of these Medicaid cuts, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors hereby requests that the Weldon Cooper Center and Virginia Tech Center for Economic and Community Engagement conduct a comprehensive study analyzing the potential impact of Medicaid cuts on all the things that I mentioned. Please, uh, be it further resolved, uh, that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors directs the county administrator to forward copies of this resolution to the West Piedmont Planning District and others that you'll see in your document.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Oscar Pagans.
Oscar Pagans. He wasn't here last week either.
I'm Kathy Cummins and I live at three five seven nine Kemp Ford Road in Union Hall. I am speaking in support of the resolution that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors requests a comprehensive study by the Weldon Cooper Center and Virginia Tech Center for Economic and Community Engagement to assess the impact of Medicaid cuts on Franklin County. I'm retired pediatric physical therapist as well as founder and former executive director of eleven-year-old nonprofit which serves children with chronic healthcare and disability needs. That nonprofit, Children's Assistive Technology Service, now operates statewide from several locations and is now headquartered in Norfolk. Even before proposed funding cuts, Medicaid was not always meeting the needs of the pediatric population I served. Without Medicaid, I shudder to imagine the hardships to be faced by families raising children with chronic illness or disability. For these families, healthcare expenses are impossible to plan for because no one anticipates having a child with disabilities. Without additional government and community support, these families are in crisis. They need help, but help costs money. Government is not a business. Its role is not to accumulate wealth. Its role is to promote the welfare of its people. If it does not, nonprofits can assist, but cannot make up the entire difference. That expectation is not sustainable. Nonprofits depending on grants and generous donors wax and wane with the economic tide. Some nonprofits, like the one I founded, receive government grants, which today are also threatened. Furthermore, returning to measures such as increasing, such as requiring families to recertify quarterly for Medicaid benefits in order to prevent fraud only creates more administrative work and more denials of needed healthcare. Imagine that a child needs a new wheelchair or thorax therapy or even surgery, but the parent forgot to recertify. Would you be able to remember to recertify for your health insurance four times a year? Especially if you're working full-time and raising a family, including a child with special needs? Such a proposal, which was made last week from the federal administration, with assurances that, oh, coverage will not change, that's disingenuous. Please realize how much this community depends on Medicaid and support this resolution, resolution to learn more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Johnson?
Keith Johnson, one ninety, Leaning Oak Road in Boons Mill. Good to see you tonight. Some of you expressed concern over the prices provided about the school for several different projects. You know intuitively or from life experience that some of these quotes are way off the mark. Roanoke City Schools needs a new high school due to overcrowding. They requested a hundred and fifty million dollars for an entire high school. Franklin County School Board requests eighty to a hundred million, I think it says now, for one building for a career technical education center. There's valid concern for the costs, uh, for the Franklin County citizen. So do current Franklin County school plans include the same educational resources for one thousand homeschool students or about one thousand private school students in Franklin County? Uh, they don't, that I know of. Do you have the means to save Franklin County millions of dollars and still provide the school with an expanded CTE program? I think you do. With the purchase of the Majocraft property, I hope you will consider taking the CTE project under your control. Develop the project in-house in county administration. Uh, you did it when you developed this building. I know it was expensive, but it's a good product. So you can do that too with the Franklin Career Center. And you will be in control of the costs. Develop the center to provide the resources needed by the school, but also develop parallel resources, so homeschool groups, private school groups, and adult education, Virginia Western, Patrick Kennedy Community Colleges, have the same resource opportunities that is provided for public school students. Extra space for teaching auto mechanics, welding, building trades, and others. Uh, county administration can manage the planning and construction as well as leasing or renting spaces of groups as requested. Public school resources can be separate in the same building and can be controlled by the school board. This could be a community resource for all Franklin County citizens. The purchase of the Majocraft property makes this feasible for less cost than the proposal from the public school. It makes the resources available to a larger population and also provides space at reduced cost for other capital improvement needs by putting these resources together. I hope you consider just taking the CTE program in-house. The money you save, uh, will probably be, I don't have any quotes, but it'll be enough to probably help fund some of the other capital improvements things. Instead of just giving it to the school and hoping they do what they need to do, you can take it under control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Eric Anspahl, four two nine Creighton Drive, Rocky Mount, Virginia. Chairman Thompson, board, and county staff, um, thank you for this opportunity. I have something a little lighter to share with you this evening. Uh, as I think you're aware, the Franklin County N double A C P, which I'm president, we received a grant from the Mellon Foundation through a project that Virginia Tech started called Monuments Across Appalachian Virginia. We are about eleven months into an eighteen-month project and things are going very well. And I want to extend to you, uh, an invitation as we are going to have an educational forum at the four eight center on May thirty-first, that's a Saturday. It's free, we'll feed you. We are going to have all kinds of historians and, um, acad- academics sharing about the Civil War history and the United States Color Troops, seventy men who were born in Franklin County, sixty-nine soldiers, one sailor, we've done all the research, exciting stories. Did I say we're gonna feed you? Yes, we are. And we're gonna go from about nine in the morning until four in the afternoon, and we're gonna top it off with Mike Wiley. I got to see Mike Wiley a few years ago at the Harvester when he did Emmett Till. Mike Wiley is gonna do a U S T C T soldier. I don't remember the name, but that's gonna be quite exciting. Uh, so mark your calendars, May thirty-first, four eight center, nine in the morning till four. Did I tell you we're gonna feed you as well? All right. And, um, a little bit more than that, that's the next big event. And you need to register, www dot raisingtheshade.org. Go there, pull up events and register. We'd love to have all of you there, please, it's gonna be a great event. And then lastly, we are gonna be doing a monument. Did you all know that? That monument's gonna be right here in Rocky Mount. It's gonna be on Franklin Street at the old first Baptist church, the historic church property. We have two sculptors, we've seen a, um, a full seven-foot mock-up of what that monument's gonna look like, and it is exciting. Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak tonight to a topic? Anyone at all? If you do, come forward. All right, we appreciate everyone being here tonight and, uh, appreciate your interest in your county government. And we will be in recess until May the twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-five at two, and at that time we'll have a broadband authority meeting, and we will not have a meeting this Thursday night, or this Thursday afternoon.